Gotcha. All right, everybody. I call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM on Tuesday, December 2nd. As you're able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Public for which. With liberty and justice.
It is so cool to see so many people here tonight. We've got a lot of great people here to recognize and a lot of exciting energy out here tonight, so thank you all for being here. We're gonna begin by adopting our agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Reed, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond. Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gettrick.
Yes.
Ms. Pardon.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we'll have the chamber ensemble from Blacksburg High School with us tonight to sing the National Anthem with choir director Darryl Peerman. Great, thank you, students. Make a quick correction there. Mr. Peerman is the music director, not the choir director, I'm pretty sure. He does a lot of things, but I don't know that he's the choir director. Awesome. Thank you all for being here. All right, next up, our student representatives tonight are Laura Altizer from Auburn High School and Olivia McNulty from Blacksburg High School. Will you please read our mission and belief statements?
MCPS is an innovative educational community. We value diversity and we are committed to equity and inclusion. MCPS empowers learners to realize success in an ever-changing global society through collaboration with communities, families, staff, and students. MCPS provides a safe, engaging learning environment and intentional exposure to positive social, emotional, and academic experiences. Our beliefs: First, all students can learn in order to pursue their dreams. Second, schools are safe places of joy, wonder, and creativity. Third, every person deserves to be loved, valued, and respected. Fourth, kindness is an essential skill of a responsible, productive community member. Fifth, the diversity of our community is one of our greatest strengths.
Sixth, all people deserve equitable access to opportunities and resources. Seventh, every child deserves an advocate. Eighth, honoring the voices of students and other stakeholders strengthens the school community. Ninth, open communication and feedback are vital to our growth. Tenth, learning and teaching are collective efforts that begin at birth and involve the entire community. And eleventh, relationship building and high expectations are foundational to student success.
Okay, great. Thank you both. Our next item of business is the student representative reports. We'll have Laura Altizer reporting for Auburn High School, followed by Olivia McNulty reporting for Blacksburg High School.
Good evening. Quite a lot has happened at Auburn since our last meeting. With the year almost halfway through, it's a good way to take stock of everything that's happened. Fall sports have officially come to a close, and we could not be more proud of our Lady Eagles' volleyball season. They finished in the top four, competing all the way to semifinals. With that, winter sports have now started, and basketball is off to a great start. Their first game was yesterday against Eastern Montgomery, where boys varsity won 56 to 38, and girls varsity won 43 to 31. The Auburn swim team is also having their first meet of the season tonight, and I wish them the best of luck. Indoor track is also off to a great start, and they will compete at an invitational this Saturday. Heritage Club is hosting their annual gingerbread bash this Thursday. Families are invited to compete in gingerbread house competitions, place bets on our community cake auction, and meet Santa Claus in the Auburn cafeteria. Heritage Club members will judge gingerbread houses based on age categories, and the winner of each category will win a prize. We look forward to seeing our community come out to enjoy the festivities. In November, our Auburn student leaders went to the Leadership Conference at Franklin County High School. Franklin County students led a country band performance to open the event, and students participated in various breakout sessions to meet other schools. A motivational speaker talked about the dangers of substance abuse and how our mental health is a serious issue in high school areas and ways to improve mental health. Our students learned about taking initiative to become a better leader and brought back many helpful ideas for us to continue strengthening our school. Our welding class went on a field trip this past week to New River Community College, where they toured the welding facilities and practiced using NRCC equipment. Additionally, the welding club is holding their winter potluck next week to celebrate the end of the first semester. The Latino Student Alliance Club has been started at Auburn High School, seeking to celebrate the heritage and culture of our Latino students. The club plans to create activities and share food that represents our students and brings awareness to Latinos in our community. To conclude, Auburn High School has had a very successful year so far. We look forward to what the end of the first semester has in store.
Okay, so for Blacksburg High School, for community, the Blacksburg High SGA concluded their annual Thanksgiving basket drive by making over 620 Thanksgiving baskets for families in the New River Valley community. The SGA was able to raise over $22,000 to go towards making these baskets. Our cosmetology two and three students from Blacksburg and Auburn High School went to Heritage Hall on Monday to do haircuts and manicures for the residents. It was a great way to connect Blacksburg High School students with the community and extend learning beyond the building. Our Blacksburg DECA is wrapping up their annual Home for the Holidays service project, which collects and packs food for local elementary schools to help families in need throughout the holiday season with full hearts and full pantries. For our sports and extracurriculars, Blacksburg High School finished up fall sports season with three state championships. Our golf team, our boys' cross-country team, and our girls' cross-country team. Our winter sports season has begun. Boys' basketball has their first game tonight at home versus Floyd, while the girls' team travels to Floyd tonight for their first game. Swim and Dive has a home meet going on tonight at the Blacksburg Aquatic Center. Indoor Track has their first meet this Saturday at Liberty University. We have two, we have, we have busy two weeks coming up with fine arts performances. The choir will hold their winter concert on Monday, December 8th, at 6:30 PM. The theater department will be putting on Peter and the Star Catcher, December 12th, at 7:00 PM, December 13th, at 2:00 PM, and 7:00 PM. And Sunday, December 14th, at 2:00 PM. Tickets will be $10 and $7 for students. The Blacksburg TRM organization will hold a talent show for students on December 18th during Bruin Block. For our clubs, Skills USA is holding a breakfast with Santa on Saturday, December 13th, in the morning, in the BHS cafeteria. BHS will be hosting the District V2 Skills USA competitions in January and will hold the awards ceremony on February 5th at 6:00 PM. Our Blacksburg DECA students competed in a district leadership conference last month, with 11 students taking home first, second, or third place in their respective categories. They look to prepare for the state leadership conference on February 27th in Virginia Beach. The DECA officers also attended DECA Power Trip in Arlington right before Thanksgiving break. The Scholastic Bowl team looks to get their regular season started in January and looks to defend their state championship. Our MAC team starts their season on January 14th at Narrows. Their first home competition will be Thursday, January 22nd. Our Math Honors Society, Mu Alpha Theta, held their induction ceremony for members in November, and a Science National Honor Society inductions will take place next Tuesday. Blacksburg High School looks forward to what our students will do next, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Laura and Olivia. Right now, we'll move on to honors, awards, and recognitions. And our first recognition is for our outgoing school board chair and District A Representative Linwood Hudson, who we'd like to recognize him for his years of service on the Montgomery County School Board. Dr. Lois Graham, our acting superintendent, will present a plaque to Mr. Hudson to commemorate his service.
It is my pleasure to present this plaque to Linwood Hudson. Mr. Hudson began his term in 2022 as the representative for District A. He was elected as board chair in 2024. We certainly appreciate his service, his dedication to the community, and to the school system. Personally, I have enjoyed his caring demeanor, his wisdom, and his guidance. I couldn't have worked with a better board chair. Linwood, you will certainly be missed.
Well, hey, y'all. This is kind of weird. You know, I anticipate in a month, I'm gonna be doing this more often, and I'll just be down here coming to meetings and heckling y'all from the audience, but yeah, I definitely want to say thank you for the recognition tonight. I don't like being recognized, but this is cool. It's been a long, but short four years. I've really enjoyed my time on this board, all the great friendships and accomplishments that we've made together. Yeah, five years ago, I never would have thought that I'd be on a board, sitting up here with cameras and lights and everything, right? I'm way too introverted for that, but it's been a great experience. I'm definitely gonna cherish a lot of the memories. I want to say thank you to several people who indulged me tonight. I want to start off with our awesome administration and all the leadership that we have in this room tonight, all the great people that we've hired to help lead our division. I think we've we've built a great team together, really thankful for that, really happy with all the with the direction that we've got MCPS going. And in particular, I'm super thankful and appreciative for Dr. Lois Graham, who's been, where are you at? There you are, trying to trying to escape. She has been an awesome interim superintendent for us. We are very lucky to have her join us. I think she's she's set the standard, in my opinion, for superintendent board communications, and I think a great model for for us to strive for in our next superintendent. So thank you for all of her efforts and work with us here. I want to say thank you to it's also awesome to have all these other teachers here tonight. When I was thinking about this speech, I didn't anticipate having so many people here. It's great to have so many other leaders and great ideas and change makers in this room with us tonight. Again, another great testament to what we have going on here in MCPS. I want to say thank you to some folks up here on this dais. I want to say thank you to Tash for all of her hard work. We couldn't have asked for a better clerk. She's always happy and smiling, even when she gives me presents, which is really just a lot of paperwork to deal with, but I want to say thank you to her. Yeah, I'm going to miss a lot of things here with you all. I'm going to miss sharing all the Mountain Dews with Penny because she probably the one person who enjoys a good soda as much as I do. Nice. I'm gonna I'm gonna miss all the times with Derek up here, all of his loud "us" before he makes a statement that always kind of jars me in my seat. I dig that, always making sure I'm awake. I'm gonna miss all the debating of policies and codes with Dr. Gitry over here, always keeping me on my toes. I'm gonna miss all the all the text messages and phone calls from from Dana Parton. She's always the very long voice to text messages that she loves to send, but if there's a person that I know cares about, you know, individuals on this board, especially after a tough meeting, I can always count on that call from Dana, and I really appreciate that. And so, in particular, I'm gonna I'm gonna miss these two who've been who's been by my side for the past two years. I said I wasn't gonna cry, and I'm not going to, but it's been awesome serving on leadership with you both. You're both so completely different people, which is awesome, but so caring and passionate about this this county, the school system. I couldn't have asked for for better people to serve with, so thank you very much. I'm gonna miss you all. Look forward to seeing how things go moving forward on this side of the dais. So, all right, thank you all. Appreciate it.
So we'll move on to our Seniors of the Month, and Dr. Lori Comer, Director of Secondary Education, will start our presentation. And this is a presentation with no action required.
Good evening, School Board members, Vice Chair Purcell, Dr. Graham, and student representatives. We are proud to celebrate the remarkable achievements of outstanding seniors from each of our four high schools. These students certainly embody leadership, resilience, and dedication, and these students are making a lasting impact in their school communities. Their profiles, which will be showcased here tonight in the central office lobby, they highlight all the different talents, the aspirations, and accomplishments. You will hear reflections from their teachers and administrators that nominated them, recognizing their hard work and their character. These exceptional students represent the best of our schools, supported by unwavering encouragement from both their families and educators. Tonight, we will also go back and recognize a September Student of the Month from CHS that has been involved in so many activities each night that we've done our recognitions, but she's able to join us tonight. Mr. Gwen will add her recognition in when he presents. Each school administrator will come forward and present in the following order: Mr. Hurd, Principal at Auburn High School; Ms. Maureen Powers, Assistant Principal of Blacksburg High School; Mr. Shane Glenn, Principal at Christiansburg High School; and Mr. Todd Lewis, Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School. We will begin with Mr. Hurd.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Graham, Ms. Osborne. The December Senior of the Month for Auburn High School is Anna Coons. If I could ask Anna and her family to join me. Anna has demonstrated excellent qualities in a student and a member of the Auburn community during her time at AHS. She's the Heritage Club President, where she worked to produce an exhibit to honor our veterans that has been on display in our library. She worked with our student leadership group, has been a member of the National Honor Society, as well as the Future Business Leaders of America. Anna's scholarship has been on display by being named the Most Outstanding Student in many of her courses, and these courses are quite rigorous. In a world where kindness is in short supply, Anna treats everyone well and sets an example for all to follow with her character. She makes every activity she's involved in a better place and works to include all of those around her. Her positive attitude and demeanor make her a model for other students to follow. She conducts herself with poise and character in all situations that she's in, and Auburn High School will greatly miss Anna upon her graduation. Anna plans to attend New River Community College and transfer to Virginia Tech to major in electrical engineering. Congratulations, Anna.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Graham, and student representatives. It is my honor to introduce Simon Chow for December Student of the Month. Simon, please join me with your family. Simon has been an incredible representative of our Bruin community and advocate for high school career and technical education programs. He is a four-year member of Blacksburg DECA, serving in many leadership roles during that time. He is currently DECA's Chapter President, responsible for leading his chapter by example, planning chapter and officer meetings, carrying out the chapter's mission and annual goals, and representing Blacksburg DECA and Blacksburg High School at all district, state, and national events. This year, he's also serving as our Virginia DECA District III President, responsible for coordinating a district-wide service project and team-building efforts across the entire Roanoke and New River Valley. Simon is a strong DECA competitor. He's placed in his DECA competitive events as at the state and national levels throughout high school. In addition to his commitment to our local DECA chapter, Simon is an advocate powerhouse, academic powerhouse, challenging himself in the classroom each and every day. He is a multi-year letter winner in tennis, and his tennis teammates know they can rely on him for support on and off the court. Simon is kind, engaged, and the epitome of what we look for in a student leader. Congratulations.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Graham, and student representatives. We're going to take it back to September real quick. Unfortunately, we were not able to recognize this individual, but it was for good reasons. She was playing in volleyball games every Tuesday night and was a part of the Christiansburg High School volleyball team that has now set the best record in school history at 29-1 on the season, so that'll be another little accolade to talk about with this individual. So at this time, I would like to ask for Ms. Jasmine Charlton and her family to come forward to be recognized, please. When asking some of her teachers to describe Jasmine, they said, Jasmine is an individual who continually impresses me with her respect, positivity, and engaging personality. Her aura and smile consistently lights up a room, and an individual cannot help but to have their spirits lifted when they interact with Jasmine. I am continually impressed with how she carries herself, even when things don't go her way. She goes out of her way to acknowledge others, extend kindness to new students, and treats everyone she comes across with 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 respect and courtesy. Jasmine exemplifies the qualities of an outstanding student, athlete, and peer, making her a role model for CHS and the core values that we uphold. She is a she is dedicated to maintaining high academic standards while also balancing the demands of athletics. Her character, involvement in CHS on many levels, and positive presence make her an exceptional representative of our of our school community. Overall, Jasmine possesses the it factor and has a bright future ahead of her, ready to leave her mark on the world. Jasmine plans to attend a four-year university to major in education after graduation. Congratulations, Jasmine. For our December Senior of the Month, could I please have Sammy Kaminski and his family come forward at this time, please? When asking some of Sammy's teachers to describe him, they said, Sammy is one of the most engaging students to work with at CHS. He is able to relate concepts in AP Government class to the real world in insightful ways. This year, he has added valuable conversations and questions to the learning in our class. Sammy is confident in his understanding of new topics and is able to voice that understanding clearly, which sparks conversations with the rest of the class. Sammy has been an outstanding musician and leader in the band for the past four years. With his assistance and leadership, the band has continued to grow in success. I am always able to rely on Sammy to look out for his peers and underclassmen and to do what is best to assist them in their musical challenges. He has been extremely reliable as our drum major this year and a big reason we have had so much growth as an ensemble. Apart from academics, Sammy is a character. His rye humor is fun to interact with, and he always has a story for most any situation. I really value Sammy's presence in class and am thankful to have taught him this semester. His impact on many levels will be felt for years to come. Sammy plans to attend a four-year college and and major in music education. Congratulations, Sammy.
Members of the School Board and Dr. Graham, it's an honor to be here this evening to recognize the December Senior of the Month for Eastern Montgomery High School, Spencer Sisson. Spencer's here with his family, and I ask that they come forward at this time. One of Spencer's teachers, Lisa Bissy, wrote the following highlighting his qualifications for this honor. "I haven't taught Spencer since his sophomore year because he attends governor's school. However, when he gets back from governor's school, he often comes to my classroom and will start doing some of his problems on one of my whiteboards in the back of the room. If I'm not busy helping another student, he'll often ask me questions. Even though I tell him I've not taken multivariable calculus since college over 30 years ago, he still wants my input. I've not told him how much it warms my heart that he still wants help from me and he has faith in my abilities to help him. While I haven't taught him in two years, he's still one of my favorite seniors, but probably one of my best Spencer stories happened this year and speaks to his character. I was having a really hard day and my head was killing me. I put my head down on my desk hoping that the coolness would help my headache. Literally two seconds later, the superintendent walked in." Spencer went home and told his mom about how I was having a tough time and that he felt bad for the unfortunate timing of the superintendent's visit. The next day, I was greeted by some chocolates from Spencer's mom, all because her wonderful son noticed that I'd been really struggling. Many seniors wouldn't notice, especially if it wasn't their teacher, but he did. He is kind, compassionate, and brilliant. I cannot say enough good things about Spencer Sisson. He truly deserves to be one of our Seniors of the Month. Upon graduation, Spencer plans to attend Virginia Tech and major in mechanical engineering. I'm sure that in doing so, he will represent EMHS well with his continued accomplishments. Please join me in congratulating Spencer Sisson as the EMHS Senior-
Okay, thank you, everybody. Our next up, Ms. Connie Froggett, the President of the Montgomery County Educational Foundation, will present grant award certificates to the respective educators who are receiving grant awards from the MCEF.
Did not wear my stilettos tonight. Okay. For those of you who don't know, I'm Connie Froggett, and I have next to me Deanna Sintman, who is the Treasurer of the Montgomery County Educational Foundation. She will be helping me tonight. Thank you, Chair Hudson. Get to say that one more time. Dr. Graham, so glad to see you sitting up there, and board members. I'm excited to present to you this evening the recipients of this year's Montgomery County Educational Foundation Grant Awards. Since 2012, the MCEF, in conjunction with the Community Foundation of the New River Valley, has awarded over $418,000 to MCPS students, PTAs, PTOs, other support organizations, and even students through our educator grant program. Every one of our four schools has benefited, every one of our schools in every four strands has benefited from this program. The purpose of the grant program is to improve our students' educational opportunities by funding creative and innovative projects that go beyond the scope of available public funding, which of course keeps dwindling. In short, to reward excellence and innovation. MCEF grant recipients represent the best in public education in our county. Most MCPS teachers of the year are also MCEF grant recipients. I want to start our awards by first of all recognizing the people who made this evening possible, starting with the MCEF Board of Directors, which is a collaborative group representing MCPS employees, administrators, school board members, as well as community members, all volunteering their time because the MCEF has no paid staff at all. I would like to ask all current and former, of which I know there are at least three in the room tonight, to please stand to be including those on the dais and be recognized for all the volunteer hours you have put into this foundation over the years. Thank you for all you do. I also want to extend a special thanks to Board Clerk Tash Osborne for all her help organizing the reception and this event tonight. I could not have done it without her. Thank you, Tash. All right, let's get this show on the road. So, to our sponsors and recipients. Awards require funds, and the MCEF is fortunate to have so many loyal donors and grant sponsors. I will call I will call folks up first by their sponsors, and we will present these in groups, and there will be an opportunity at the end of each group for applause and photography, which I think Andrew's going to handle for us back there. Okay, and I'm going to ask that our grant recipients line up across here next to Deanna. Deanna, you might have to come closer to me. We do have a couple of large groups, so please hold your pause until each of the groups is represented, and you'll you'll see when that is. So I'm going to start first with what is called the MCEF Travel Fund. Now, this fund was originally created to be more of an emergency travel fund when, for example, a competition group actually makes it to Nationals when they really didn't expect to and they hadn't budgeted for it, and they can't don't have time to fundraise, for example, or times when temporary funding fell through and we had to fill a gap until- Or times when temporary funding fell through and we had to fill a gap until the next year for whatever reason. But we found over the last few years that more and more what we're seeing are actually field trip requests. During COVID, of course, pretty much all field trips stopped for obvious reasons, but unfortunately, most of them haven't come back, and that is typically for funding reasons. So a lot of what you're going to see tonight are actually field trips being funded. Obviously, we can't fund them all, but these were selected for their uniqueness and the enrichment that they will provide the students. So I would like to start first with the award. The grant recipient for this one is actually Nicholas Cataldo, but standing in for him tonight is Mark Manju. And I'm also going to bring up Meghan Atkinson, who is our Director of CTE and works with the Corps of Cadets. This grant is going to Nicholas for the, to serve the MCPS Corps of Cadets. They are going to be taking a field trip to visit Norfolk Naval Station, and as a naval brat myself who's grew up in that area and been on several of those bases, I think it will be a really impressive event for these kids. Next, the next award is actually for Lena Martz, who could also could not be here tonight. So I'd like to bring up Brandon Keith from Charlesville Middle School. This award is for the future business leaders of America to compete at the regional, state, and national competition levels. And finally, in this group, I'd like to bring up Gabriella Chambers from Gilbert Linkus Elementary and her principal, Carrie Webb. This is one that was particularly heartfelt to us. As a child who grew up in Virginia and used to play in the battlefields of Yorktown, it's always been sort of one of the things you do in fourth grade is you go visit Jamestown. And I did as a child, and my kids did with Montgomery County Public Schools. Unfortunately, those field trips are no longer happening, or at least no longer being funded by school funds the way they were before. And unless our kids are going to start selling popcorn and Thin Mints at front doors, I don't know when it's going to come back. So this one really reached out to us, and they will be using these to cover the museum fees to get into the Jamestown Museum and Tour. So congratulations to our 2025 MCEF Travel Fund recipients. Okay, so our next group is for our Professional Development Fund. We set aside funds each year to help educators who want to benefit or extend their education or conferences, those types of events that serve as professional development of their choice. The first person I'd like to bring up, who is a multi-grant recipient from the past, is Colin Baker from Blacksburg High School. And I'm going to go ahead and ask his assistant principals, because they're in this group as well. Debbie Showalter and Maureen Powers would also come up because Mr. Stewart is not here tonight. But Mr. Baker's grant is to attend the National Council for Social Studies Conference. Next, I'd like to call up Samantha Jones from Margaret Beeks Elementary and their principal, Megan Holly. Samantha is going to attend the International Conference on ADHD, Attention Deficit and Hyperactivity Disorder. And finally, receiving awards tonight are Maureen Powers and Debbie Showalter from Blacksburg High School, and their award is for continuing education, to address ninth grade discipline disparities, and to improve their school climate. So congratulations to our 2025 MCEF Professional Development Grant recipients. So this next group are actually grants supported directly from Montgomery County Educational Funds. So these are funds that come strictly straight from our donors, all of which are local, usually local people, as well as local small businesses. First, I'd like to bring up Meredith Sheeler from Blacksburg Middle School and their principal, Dr. Robert Johnson. Meredith is going to use this to buy a class set of genuine lacrosse sticks as opposed to the ones that they sometimes get that aren't actually real lacrosse sticks. So this will be a classroom set of lacrosse sticks. And our other recipient is Presley Greveli from Falling Branch Elementary School. And I'd like to bring up their principal also, Dr. Eric Anderson. Presley is going to use these funds to purchase interactive materials to support the newly adopted elementary language arts curriculum. Let's get it together nice. All right, so congratulations to our 2025 Montgomery Educational Foundation Direct Fund Grant Recipients. Okay, this next group is a big one, and so it might require having administrators standing behind the recipients. I'd like to bring up Jessica Workout, Executive Director of the Community Foundation of the New River Valley. In 2010, 2011, the MCEF established both an endowment fund as well as a grant pass-through fund with the Community Foundation, and we have been growing those ever since. So each year, this list gets longer and longer and longer, which is wonderful to note. We have several endowment funds with them. There are also funds that other people support as well and that are handled through the Community Foundation, so this is a large group of those funds. So I'm going to start first with grants that are being funded directly by the MCEF Endowment and Pass Through Funds. Our first recipient is Christina Hannah from Christiansburg Primary School and their principal, Christina Warner. Christina is going to use her grant funds to purchase sensory learning tools for English language learners. Next, I'd like to bring up Sarah Burris from Montgomery Central and their director, Mike Stanley. Sarah is developing a program called the Movement Program, where students receive fitness trackers and working with their teachers, they will track their progress and improvement throughout the year, and then at the end of the year, they'll have a program where they mark their their success and their performance throughout the year. And finally, I'd like to bring up Dolores Acres from Falling Branch Elementary School and their principal, Dr. Eric Anderson. This grant is for exercise equipment, exercise equipment for pre-kindergarteners, because for the most part, the equipment we have on our campuses are not really appropriate for preschoolers. And so this will supply age-appropriate exercise and recess equipment for pre-K students. The next grant I want to present is the Bonnie Kitts Memorial Grant, and this one is going to Dr. Craig Ramsayer from the Margaret Beeks Elementary School PTO. And I'd like to bring up also the principal, Megan Holly. And these funds are going to go to purchase pickleball equipment for PE classes, one of the most popular sports out there now. The next grant I'd like to present is the Phyllis Albritton Honorary Grant. Phyllis, of course, was a school board member, as well as one of the re-founding members of the Montgomery County Educational Foundation. This recipient is Sarah Walden from Gilbert Linkus Elementary School, and I'd like to bring up their principal as well, Carrie Webb. Sarah is purchasing what are called CPN readers, and these allow students with disabilities to read independently using a device that reads the text for them and reads it back to them so that they can work independently. It it gives them a lot more confidence, and it also frees up time for the teacher or the aide to help other students while they're reading independently. Next, I would like to bring up sponsors, Dr. Rosemary Blaisner and Dr. Stephen Jeros. So Rosemary and Steve are supportive of a lot of different things, and I know one of them is the arts, because I've served with them on the Arts Center Board as well. They founded this particular fund back, for those of us who are old enough to remember Star Grants, and that was what they typically geared the funds towards. Unfortunately, Star Grants went away about the same time that the MCEF started offering grants, and we were very fortunate this year to have them choose two of our applicants to receive their sponsored grant. So the first one goes to Lori Mafford from Falling Branch Elementary School. I'd like to bring up their principal, Dr. Eric Anderson, who's already up here. There are a couple principals that are going to be up and down a lot tonight. Lori is going to use her funds to purchase interactive hands-on science kits for her classroom. And the other recipient of the Jeros Blaisner Fund is Irina Childress from Auburn Elementary School. I'd like to bring up Dr. Kim Regus. And this is a very interesting one. Several of you, as school board members, may remember when we went to the National Conference and we toured the mobile ed planetarium. And it's basically a field trip that comes to you rather than you having to take the kids. And that particular one was a mobile planetarium. Irina is going to use her funds to do a mobile ed science field trip. All right, so next sponsor I want to bring up, someone near and dear to me, Dr. Mark Froggett. Steven Rosemary, stay up here, hold on. Nobody leaves yet. This is my husband. He hates doing these things. All right, so we also have an endowed fund with the Community Foundation, as well as we make annual donations. And so these grants are being sponsored from those funds. The first one is Beth Moore from Christiansburg Primary School and their principal, who's already up here, Christina Warner. Beth is going to purchase dramatic play and sensory centers for three kindergarten classes at CPS. And then the last and final from this group, I'm actually going to bring up two people, Colin Baker and Jonathan Marie, Monsieur Marie. And since their principal couldn't be here, I would like to ask Maureen Powers to come up and stand in their place. So this is a collaborative effort between Mr. Baker and the Social Studies Department and Monsieur Marie, the French professor at Blacksburg High School. They will be celebrating the 250th anniversary of the Franco-American friendship that formed during the Revolutionary War, and in particular, when France granted us the Statue of Liberty. This was an exchange program where previously, students from BHS went to France and met students over there. This time, we're exchanging, those students are coming here, and they'll be having an exchange program with with our students at Blacksburg High School. So these are your 2025 Community Foundation of the NRV Educator Grants. Mark and I also donate directly to the MCEF, not just through the Community Foundation, but also directly. And the following grants represent sponsorships that we selected out of our thirty-some, thirty-five, thirty-seven applications this year that really spoke to us and were things that we like to support. The first one I'd like to call up is Sharon Newbern from Falling Branch Elementary School. So, Dr. Anderson, you get to get back up again. It's a good problem to have, trust me. So Sharon's grant is for something she actually did several years back, but is doing again because, of course, students have aged out, and so we have a new group of students. And this is, she is doing a poetry workshop, as well as bringing in the speaker, and they will actually do a workshop with the fifth-grade students. This is for the entire school. It's a whole-day program with Allen Wolf. What Sharon doesn't know is she's actually getting another award tonight. Each year, the MCEF holds a special fundraiser during the Community Foundations Give Local Event called Give Your Favorite Teacher a High Five. Parents are asked to donate to the MCEF in honor of an outstanding teacher in their child's life. For every $5 donated, that teacher is entered into a drawing for a $100 Amazon gift card, and I'm excited to announce that this year's winner of that drawing is Sharon Newbern. Sharon, you'll get an e-gift card by by email as soon as I recover from tonight. All right, the next person I'd like to call up in this group is Kristy Nesbit from Christiansburg Middle School, and I believe we have both her principal and assistant principal here tonight, Melinda Morgan and Joe Caldwell. Kristy is going to use these funds to build raised beds in their community garden, which not only teaches educational, is not an educational opportunity, but also one that brings in the community and has that collaboration to it. And then the last grant in this group goes to Katie Newman from Bellevue Elementary School. I believe their principal, Chris Hewitt, is here. And Katie is going to be conducting what are called sensory-affirming field trips for special education students. Students, particularly with autism and other special ed designations, often have difficulty in normal settings, doing things like music, or theater, or field trips and things like that. So these field trips are set up specifically for those students to be a more calming and less stimulating experience so that they can enjoy it sort of in the environment that they are most comfortable with. So these are the Dr. Mark and Connie Froggett Grant Educator Grant Awards. All right, so for this next group, I would like to bring up Dr. Alex Sang. Dr. Sang is representing the Intuitive Surgical Incorporated Foundation. We're fortunate to have a site in the New River Valley from the of the Intuitive Surgical Incorporated Corporation, and they have a foundation that allows their employees to make donations, and they will match those funds. And actually, today, they had a double match going on for Giving Day. So these grants come out of both the donations from the employees and the match from the Intuitive Foundation. So I'd like to start with Mallory Miller at Bellevue Elementary School. Mr. Hewitt could also come up again. And Mallory is purchasing indoor recess STEM cards. These are opportunities for students when they have inclement weather or bad days when they can't go outside for recess to do something educational as opposed to just doing schoolwork. So they get to pull out these, these, these kits and carts on the cart and have essentially indoor recess. Our next recipient, who is a many, many past grant recipient, is Candace Johnston from Christiansburg Primary School, and I'd like to bring up their principal, Christina Warner. And this time around, Candace is purchasing hands-on science kits for kindergarteners. Science is not something you generally think of in kindergarten, but it definitely starts in kindergarten, and these are manipulatives and things that can help little hands and little kids understand science at their level. The next grant recipient I'd like to bring up is Laura Funk from- The next grant recipient I'd like to bring up is Laura Funk from Auburn Elementary School and their principal, Dr. Kim Regus. And Laura is using this to purchase what is called a chop saw cardboard fabrication tool. Now that might sound a little scary for elementary students, but actually a chop saw is a much better way for young students to safely cut as opposed to using scissors. And so it's a safer replacement for scissors. In particular, it works well with cardboard. So, and she's going to use her funds to purchase one of those. Next, I'd like to bring up Kayla Davis, also from Auburn Elementary School. So their principal's still already up here. And Kayla is going to be purchasing a chick incubator, which the MCF has actually funded those before. I know there's one at Gilbert Linkus Elementary that we funded. But this is an excellent opportunity for students to see the life cycle in action using chicken incubators. The next recipient is Catherine Galecki from Christiansburg High School and their principal, Shane Gwynn, could come up as well. So Catherine was in an interesting situation when school started this year because the APDE Biology had been expanded from two sections to three sections, but there wasn't enough biotech equipment for a third class. So we stepped in to provide the funds to purchase the equipment necessary for that third class. And then last in this group, I would like to bring up again Dolores Akers, but also Maggie Maloney from Falling Branch Elementary. Dr. Anderson? This was our highest-scoring grant this year. It's called the Learning Lagoon. So I was on the school board when we did the improvements at Falling Branch Elementary. Unfortunately, the courtyard in the center was not addressed at that time. And Dolores and Maggie got together and decided to put together plans for refurbishing that area. And we are providing the funds necessary to purchase the equipment in order to set the gardens back up and make it a useful, educational, as well as just a nice place to go during the day. So congratulations to our 2025 Intuitive Foundation Educator Grants. Okay. So this is our last, but often some of our most special ones. Like to save those for the end. So this group includes some special sponsors. Number one, this first grant is sponsored directly by MCPS employees who make payroll deduction every pay period directly to the MCEF, including one of our school board members, Ms. Franklin, which we thank you very much for. And we like to try to select something that we feel would really be meaningful and helps both the educator and/or the educators as well as the students. So the recipient of this award is Tracy Vest from Auburn Elementary School. And Dr. Regus, could you also come up? So Tracy is using the funds to set up a reading area that will support mental health for the students through literature in her classroom. The next award is sponsored by Susan Miller. Susan could not be here tonight. Susan was a longtime MCF board member, also a retired MCPS teacher. This award goes to Karen Mikowitz, also at Auburn Elementary School. And Karen is going to use these funds to set up a dedicated classroom reading space in her classroom. And then the final grant we have here, if Lynn Marjim is here. Lynn did you? I thought you made it. So Lynn's husband, Dr. Dale Marjim, was a longtime educator in MCPS who passed away last year. And this fund was started with funds both from the family as well as friends of Dr. Marjim. So this is the second annual award we've given out. And we try to choose ones, we never know if it's really going to be a good fit or not. This one turned out to be a good fit. I'd like to bring up Leslie Lawson from Eastern Montgomery Elementary School and Kate Stewart, their principal. So when we sent out the email to Leslie and Kate about the award, we got an email back from Kate that said, "This is so exciting. Dr. Marjim was my principal when I was at Shawsville Middle School." And we got this from Leslie. "Learning about his love for the outdoors and for reading, it seems especially fitting that this project is being funded through Dr. Marjim's memorial fund because this grant is to set up a hammock reading garden on the campus at Eastern Montgomery Elementary School dedicated to him." Congratulations to our last group of recipients. Stories like that and the outstanding educators that came before you tonight are the reason we, the volunteers of the MCEF, do what we do. This concludes our awards recognition for 2025. I'm going to ask that as soon as the board takes a break, our participants move quickly to the lower lobby for a group picture and also to allow the school board an opportunity to meet the seniors of the month so we can get out of their way. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share these awards with you. Congratulations to our 2025 grant recipients and enjoy the rest of your holiday season. Thank you.
So now the board will take a break to come recognize honorees, students and teachers and principals and anybody else. Thank you.
All right, everybody, we'll get back after it here. Our next agenda item is public address. We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about education matters in this community. As a reminder, the board sets aside thirty minutes to start our public address. We have the option to extend in thirty-minute increments, which Ms. Reed will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after ninety minutes, the board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional thirty-minute session at the end of the business meeting. The clock continues to applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers who get to address the board. I'll call each speaker up by name in the order that they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. If the board does not respond, the speakers are in public address. Screens will show when the speaker has thirty seconds remaining when their time is up. Please state your name and the area of the county you live in, looking at the signup list, and I don't see anyone signed up. So with that, the public address is closed. How about that?
What do y'all do?
And I got mine to go.
All right. If no one wishes to move an item out of consent, we will consider these items approved. I do want to note a donation from the Blacksburg Regional Art Association for $4,000, which is $1,000 to each of our high school art departments, which is awesome. Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of bills as presented?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree. That first was so fast. Any discussion? Ms. Reed, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gettrick.
Yes.
Ms. Pardon.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. That brings us to our business meeting. We'll start off with the report from the superintendent. Dr. Lois Graham will provide us with her report.
I just had the pleasure of celebrating the conclusion of our first, of our teen first responder academy. The academy was developed in partnership with Montgomery County Fire and Emergency Medical Services and included five sessions where students learned about career opportunities in fire and emergency medical services. It was so impressive to watch our students take part in those mock activities and to hear their enthusiasm and their plans for the future. I appreciate the partnership with Montgomery County Fire and Rescue. I also attended the New River Community College's inauguration ceremony for President Robert Brandon, and I want to thank New River Community College for the many wonderful opportunities that they provide our students as well. And finally, as we begin the holiday season and get close to our winter break, I would like to encourage everyone to enjoy the season, take time to make both special memories with your family and within the school system. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, I'll give a quick update on our superintendent's search process. The application process closed a week or two ago. We actually just met with BWP last night. We ended up being presented twenty-two applications, which was outstanding. Great number of candidates for old Montgomery County here, a great collection of experience and folks for us to consider. A lot of folks from Virginia, which is great. You know, that was one of the things that the committee was asking for, more, you know, folks that have an understanding of this area and want to be here, which is great. So with, with inputs from all the board members and the down-selection process from BWP, we've settled on our first round of candidates. So we're going to start the initial interviews next week, and then we'll down-select to our finalists the week after next. So this is our last meeting on the dais, but we've got three other meetings already scheduled and a fourth in the works. So still a busy month for us, but, yeah, I know, right, that we know of. But definitely want to say thank you to BWP. Those guys have been awesome to work with. They put a lot of effort into this for us. They did a great presentation for us last night of all the candidates, and it's been great working with them, and we're looking forward to finding a great superintendent, hopefully, from that, that group. Anything on this board?
Chair Hudson, I believe that there was, while the majority of the information that we had at our meeting yesterday is confidential, there was a page that our consultant said that we could share.
Mm-hmm.
That was about where applicants came from and that distribution, and I was just wondering if the board was open to sharing that information.
Yeah, sure. Kind of broke down like, like the areas they're from, I think some of the experience levels. Yeah, we didn't discuss that last night. Is, is the board generally okay with, with sharing that information publicly? It was all anonymous at that point, right? But I think it would give a good understanding of the applicant pool that we're looking at. Okay, that's a great idea. I know Andrew was interested in information to go up on the website anyway, so that's, that's a good one. Great, anything else on that one? All right. Next up, Katie Seidman, our MCEA president, will present an update from the Montgomery County Education Association.
Good evening. Chair Hudson, Dr. Graham, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present to you a report on behalf of the Montgomery County Education Association. First, on your agenda tonight is a memorandum of agreement proposed by the MCEA to extend our current collective bargaining agreement for certified staff from December 31st, 2025 to June 31st, excuse me, 30th, 2026. We have proposed this MOA for several reasons. One, it will ensure that the subsequent contract period aligns with the school calendar, the academic calendar, promoting greater stability for staff and greater consistency for students. Two, this would also give administration teams more time during the summer to adjust any building level plans that need to be changed to meet the stipulations of the new CBA versus changing schedules or plans mid-year to align with a new CBA. Third, it will also allow the MCEA to engage in meaningful negotiations with the new superintendent once they are hired, ensuring that any long-term agreements reflect the vision of the new incoming leadership. Regardless of the proposed extension, our current contracts will continue to be active until new contracts are ratified by both parties as per our collective bargaining resolution. There will be no lapse in protections for our staff come January 2026 regardless of tonight's outcome. While I understand that it is on your agenda tonight as a first reading, we would like to encourage the board to take a vote on this item tonight, if at all possible, since the board will not meet again until after the CBA expiration date. Secondly, I would like to thank Dr. Brewster and the HR department, as well as everyone involved in the process, for the new proposal to revise the salary scales for facilities and operations. We have been in communication with many of these employee groups throughout our collective bargaining processes, and the concerns that we have heard from these groups are directly related to this change. We are so appreciative, appreciative to all of you as well for committing to include this increase within the salaries of the staff rather than as additional stipends. We look forward to your approval of this item tonight. Next, I would like to share a concern from our members regarding special education caseloads. Because of eligibility meetings throughout the semester, so we have a set amount of special education caseloads that come in in August, but because of eligibility meetings that go from August to December, those special education caseloads are beginning to increase. While they are still within manageable levels for our staff, we're concerned that they will increase to less manageable levels. Our collective bargaining agreement for certified staff states that every, there shall be reasonable efforts made to prevent special education caseloads from exceeding twelve students per special education teacher. So we would like to keep an eye on that increase for caseloads for our sped staff. Of course, this is a shortage that you are intimately familiar with, but we would just like to make sure that as much as possible our special education staffs, staffing is as complete as it can be so that those caseloads can be spread out between more staff. We have discussed this with Dr. Graham and Dr. Widener, but again, the more eyes on the problem, the better. Just as a reminder, I shared the MCEA calendar priorities for the 26-7 school year at last month's meeting. Ms. Bond, thank you for your suggestion to gather feedback from our members regarding the all-county opening event that's scheduled at the start of every year. We have done so, and you're 100% right. The staff overwhelmingly agreed that they would like to see a change in that event is structured. So we will be sharing our suggestions for that event with our newly hired superintendent when the time comes. As you begin your calendar discussions, please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions or clarification regarding those priorities. Lastly, on behalf of the MCA, I would like to extend a huge thank you to Mr. Hudson. Chair Hudson, thank you for your steadfast support of MCPs staff and of the MCEA. Specifically, I would like you to thank you for your efforts and your support of our collective bargaining efforts. You've been with us from the start, and you have championed our efforts from the very beginning. Thank you so much for your service to our school community, our staff, and our students. Are there any questions that I can answer for you tonight?
Board members, any questions? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next up, the general music textbook adoption was presented as a first read on November 11th. It is brought back tonight for approval. Do I have a motion to adopt Quaver Music as the general music textbook? Dr. Gettrick and Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Any questions for? Okay. Where's my thing? Ms. Reed, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gettrick.
Yes.
Ms. Pardon.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Next up, the proposed 2025-26 committee membership for the Career and Tactical Education Advisory Committee was first presented on November 11th. It's also brought back tonight for approval. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 Career and Tactical Education Advisory Committee membership as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bond and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Okay. Ms. Reed, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gettrick.
Yes.
Ms. Pardon.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up, the administration presented a proposed salary scale revision for facilities and transportation positions on November 11th. The proposal was brought back tonight for approval. Dr. Tom Brewster will start by providing a brief update on the proposal.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Graham, tonight we present the final reading for the proposal to revise salary scales for facility and transportation positions. We have added a third objective based upon feedback that we received after the last presentation, and that is to adjust salaries for builders, carpenters, and affect lead positions to remain competitive with surrounding counties and school divisions and integrate the professional stipends into the revised structures. In addition, after hearing some feedback, we would like to present or propose to update the builder-carpenter position title to maintenance technicians because their position is much more multifaceted than just carpenter-builders. So we want to make that, that change in the presentation. The additional amount for this proposal is $40,000 for the remainder of this year and $80,000 for next year.
Board, any questions or comments on that before we go to our motion? Okay, thanks for the update. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the salary scale revisions as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to go with Ms. Franklin and Dr. Gettrick. Yeah, it's like jeopardy up here tonight. Any discussion? Yeah, yeah, right. Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Reed, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gettrick.
Yes.
Ms. Pardon.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up, the MOU to extend the current CBA to June 30th, 2026 is attached tonight for a first read. The MOU will be brought back for approval on January 6th, 2026. We heard comments from the MCEA tonight. Any, any discussion on the MOU?
So because of the timeline with this, and we are in process of scheduling another meeting in the next whenever, I would like to suggest that we put this on that agenda for a second reading. So I'll make a motion.
I was just going to ask you if you were going to actually, I'd love to second it if you want to have.
I'll make a motion that we move this to the next upcoming scheduled meeting for 2025.
For final approval.
For final approval, yes.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on that motion?
So the next scheduled meeting, does that count as our, our interviews, are those meetings? No, they're not meetings. So that would be the, okay.
Yeah. The student matter.
We're still trying to probe a date for that, but it'll probably be squeezed in at some point next week, so. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. I don't see any other discussion on that. Ms. Reed, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gettrick.
Yes.
Ms. Pardon.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. I guess any other discussion just on the MOU tonight while we're here before we move on? Yeah, sorry. Just any other discussion on the MOU tonight before we move on? Yeah, sure. I agree. I don't like voting on things the first time we see them either, but that's a great idea to go ahead and do it, get it done as quickly as possible, so. Okay, great. We are moving on along tonight. All right, a staffing update for MCPs is attached in board docs. The administration will answer any questions regarding this update. We're intending to do a presentation, per se, but board members have any questions? Dr. Brewster is available. Key mic, sir, I'm sorry. Oh, you got it. Yeah, he's good.
All of our custodial positions have ever been filled or we have recommended a candidate. I've been here two years. I think that's the first time that we've had all of those positions filled.
Great. So I still have some concerns about our paraprofessionals.
Yes.
As far as subs. So I think that's something during our budget process we need to address as far as to try to attract folks, just like we did when we couldn't get regular subs for teachers and administrators, increasing the wages to attract folks to be able to come to those positions because it's just not acceptable, these numbers that we have.
Agreed. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Thank you so much. So I have a question about the special ed teachers. The current vacancy is, I guess this is page two or the first page, says that there are five vacancies, but then two slides down it says current special ed vacancies. Oh, I just figured that out. I'm so sorry. How does that compare to the, the beginning of the year? Because I know that there's been some turnover. You might not know that off the top of your head.
I, I don't, but I can go back and, and look. Dr. Legan may have.
I don't know of any turnover. I know we have two open speech positions, a .5 teaching position at Margaret Beeks, a .5 lead teaching position at Harding, and off the top of my head, we had one full-time position to fill. And where was that? I can't remember off the top of my head. Because that lead teacher took, is, will be a, a coach.
Okay.
Once we fill her position.
Once we fill her position, okay. One of the reasons I'm asking the comparison is just, this was a, a point of discussion, budget conversations last year, and so I wanted to know if this is roughly, are we roughly at the same spot as we were at the beginning of the year? Or are we, have we filled some of those positions to indicate that we are filling positions even though we still have five open right now? Because I know that they're all, it's a small percentage of the overall special ed pool.
Yeah, I, I think we're doing great. We only have two open speech positions, and really, it's just two teaching positions because with two of them are half-time positions. So.
Okay.
We're in a much better place.
Great.
One of the things that Dr. Widener started last year was in November, we do a job fair for student teachers. We had about 29 student teachers, current student teachers, show up, and I believe we were able to find special education candidates that were going to complete in December that we can hire in, as of, once we get their transcripts, so.
Excellent. Now, does that also mean that as a result of hiring those speech pathologists that were, were not relying upon a third party to provide those services, correct? Okay, wonderful.
So we will cut down on our contracted service, which is great.
And by how much? How many did we have, were we contracting?
Well, we, we were contracting, well, we filled two. We, we were contracting for four positions.
Okay, that's what I remember. That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I had a quick follow-up question. So just for clarity, the special education certified five vacancies is four full-time equivalent vacancies because there's two half-time people.
Right.
Correct.
Two teaching positions and two speech positions.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so just for ease of digestion and transparency on the vacancy slides, it would be good to have. be good to have, rather than the number of vacancies, the number of full-time equivalent vacancies.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Board, any other questions or comments? Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Brewster.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Board, next up, we got, we got one more business meeting topic here. I'm sure it'll be a short conversation. Let's talk budget. So one of the things that we discussed as a board earlier as we were talking about the budget process, an idea that came up was to have a, have a discussion before, before we got out of the year, for the board to kind of share their priorities to the administration so as they're crafting their budget, you know, kind of have a, have a sense for what the board's priorities are up front. So we'll, we'll do that conversation tonight. I think first off, Dr. Graham, would you share where the team is at this point in the budget process for us?
Certainly. Our team has been working diligently on developing the upcoming budget. Every principal and every department has submitted a budget request, and then they met with us to discuss their needs in detail. I want to commend them for the thoughtful consideration they gave to their submissions and their commitment to be in responsible stewards of their resources. At the last board meeting, you also heard requests from various groups, and the requests we heard were very similar. In addition, we're conducting a thorough review of the current budget, including position control, cost increases, expenditures, and overall alignment of resources. Based on this work, several priorities have emerged. So I'm going to go over those in order. And in order to recruit and retain highly qualified employees, we believe that the following actions are necessary. Number one, provide both step increases and raises to maintain a competitive job market. Number two, to continue revising the support staff salary scales. And by the way, I'm already getting text messages saying thank you to the board for passing the salary scale a few minutes ago. We think continuing that and incorporating stipends into the scale is essential to attract and retain staff across schools and departments. Number three is to maintain the current employee benefits at no additional cost to staff, which MCPS has historically managed this very well, and we believe it's critical to continue that. Number four is to remain in compliance with state and federal regulations. This year, that will likely require hiring three additional teachers for English Language Learners Program due to the increased enrollment of students who speak English as a second language. We do not have the final title funding allocations yet. That will come later, but early indications suggest that we may need to transfer four of our title-funded teachers to the operating budget because of suspicion that some of the title funds may be cut. We also need to hire one media specialist at Blacksburg High School to meet state compliance requirements. Number five is to ensure appropriate staffing levels across all schools. We heard clearly that each elementary school needs a full-time assistant principal. There's also a strong need for expanded mental health supports, including behavior specialists, and due to new state regulations, we likely will need to increase instructional support like coaches, that type thing. We also received specific instructional requests. An example of that would be Eastern Montgomery High School doesn't have a marketing teacher, and we feel that they definitely should have. We will continue monitoring that type thing. Second semester, we'll monitor the enrollment again to determine staffing needs that will support adequate course offerings as well as maintaining appropriate class sizes, K through 12. So we suspect we'll need a few positions or teachers there. And as Ms. Franklin mentioned, we want to look at our paraprofessionals, try to bring those in line, do something to encourage more paraprofessionals to join us and stay with us. And then we want to address operational needs. Those requests, many are essential. They include maintaining the bus fleet, repairing and updating facilities, funding technology upgrades, software, and subscription services. So while the number of requests is substantial, they are all grounded in legitimate needs that would strengthen our schools. We also recognize the reality of limited funding. Our goal is to present a balanced, progressive, realistic budget that positions our schools for continued excellence. And finally, we want to consider obviously the requests that the board members prioritize. So with that, we're hoping to hear what your top two or three priorities are tonight. Two or three. Two or three, yes.
You only get three, Karen.
You're supposed to put the mic off.
So we did discuss during agenda prep just kind of how to, how to structure this conversation. I mean, I think, you know, so obviously we want everybody to have a chance to kind of weigh in on this, you know, at least starting with a top number of priorities is a good start, and then we'll just kind of see where it goes from there. Certainly any questions or comments to what Dr. Graham presented, but we'd like to hear from each board member about what your priorities are. Who wants to start?
Can I start with a question for Superintendent Graham? So last year's budget, there were a few things that we were unable to fund, and one of them that I know, a lot of work had been done on an immersion program, a dual-language immersion program. Is that something that you're, you are hoping to include in this budget? Is there anything that wasn't funded from last year that you, that the administration on your side would like to see added to the budget?
We looked at several things like that and thought that first, if we hear your priorities, that would help us know what comes to the top. What we have done is looked at programs like the dual-language program to see how much that would cost. Some of those things that cost less may be easier to put in the budget. So we really were kind of waiting to hear what consensus was here, but certainly that was one of the things, with two or three other things that we looked at as well that didn't get funded last year that we think might be doable.
Okay, great, thank you. Should I just continue? Yeah. So I know that we had a preliminary conversation, and I appreciated your reaching out to me asking for my thoughts. I'm supportive of that because at the time, I said that there's not money in the, in the budget, but I know that there was, there was a need for it, and there was also support from the community for having it. So I would be supportive of seeing that funded if there's a, if we can do that. A couple of priorities. One is there was a discussion of a program for funding some of our students taking AP exams, and I would love to see the administration do something. Even if we can't do everything we would like to do, at least to get that ball rolling, I think that that would be, I think that would be helpful for our students. I'd love to see something that's a combination of both need, but also where there, you know, some of the students have skin in their game, so, so that there's an equilibrium there. I think for me that one of the big priorities, well, not surprisingly, we saw the last meeting, which is the disparity in the pay scales for MCPS employees versus county employees. Now, based on how wide that gap is, I don't think it's at all realistic that within one year we can close that gap, but I would love to see some analysis from the administration that would give us, say, a five-year plan to negotiate with the county on their side to ensure that there's equal pay for equal work for MCPS employees, and for me, that is a high priority. There shouldn't be second-class employees in this county. So for me, that, I know that I have other things I'd like to see funded, but that graph disturbed me, and I want to make that a priority.
Great, thank you. We can go around if you want. Ms. Pardon, you want to go next?
Yeah, so. I don't know if I so much have my priorities in line yet because I'm still talking to people and hearing from people and, but what, what I do know that I think we need to keep in mind as a board is, at least for me, as far as when we start this process, I would probably like to know where we are as far as where we're standing in the budget now and what any deficits or, you know, anything like that we might have or things that we might need to look to in the future as far as infrastructure and things like that because I know we're continuing to look at buildings and things like that that are going to come down the line. I'm kind of looking kind of further down the road a little bit and trying to bring things in and prioritize that way, so to speak, but I do absolutely agree with the salary increases for the employees and, and the benefits for sure. And then I just want to make sure that we are good stewards of our taxpayers' funds and we find ways to maybe try to save some money on some things and maybe look outside of the box a little bit on how we can do things and improve things. We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of wants and a lot of ask, and we've got a lot of needs. So I'm still kind of trying to go through everything. We've been extremely busy with everything we've got going on, but I've been making some notes. Talked to you, Ms. Dr. Graham, and I've, you know, heard from some other board members. So I think I might have a better idea of what more in line I would like to see as priorities once I see where our starting point is at and where we're at as far as what we have and what we need to consider. We need to make sure that we keep to take care of things and then bring in what we feel our priorities are at this point.
Okay, great. Ms. Bond.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the things that have already been mentioned, and I do agree with Dana as well. I don't know that it's completely fair to kind of throw everything out there right at this point. I do agree with Dr. Gitry in the, making sure that our, that was something that I kind of brought up last year and the, making sure our pay scales are comparable. And, and this may fall under more capital, but I also would like, and I've mentioned this for us too, and I don't know, like I said, if it would be a budgetary item or capital budgetary item, but to have a discussion on also about the schools and the fields and making sure they're up to par, whether it's lights being fixed, whether it's, you know, grass, whether it's dirt being brought in. And, and I know that that sounds like, well, that's not part of a real, it is part of a well-rounded student. And when we talk about, I'm just going to use a football game night, that's band, that's a football team, that's, that inquires many, many students. It's not just one group. Making sure our fields are up to par, making sure the lights are where they need to be, making sure the tracks are what they should be so we don't get behind like we happened to at Eastern Montgomery. And some of the things that, you know, I have heard about some of our baseball fields and throughout the county and things like that, we need to be taking a look at those because that, that affects a lot of our community, a lot of our students, a lot of our families. So that's a priority for me, and I don't know where that fits in, how it fits in, I don't know if that falls under capital, I don't know if that falls under our budget, but we need to take a look at that and make sure that extracurricular activity that plays a huge part to our students. And I think personally, that's what makes and drives children to want to be at school. And we already know we have a problem there. So we need to do everything we can do to make sure kids want to be in school. And if that's, making sure auditoriums are where they need to be, it's not just about sports. I'm talking about all extracurricular activity, so that's a big priority for me.
All right, great, thank you. And Ms. Purcell.
Maybe to piggyback a little bit on Ms. Bond's statement, we have some sad, sorry-looking So beyond just the fields and competition spaces, I know that PTAs work really hard to raise matching funds for new, for new equipment, and not every school has the capacity to raise the same amount. And, but our kids all need that break time and activity time so that they can be better learners when they get back into the classroom. I want to make sure that our learning labs are equipped appropriately. That's something that I've heard that it may, may not be equitable at, at every school. So to make sure that those students have, have the materials that they need in those classrooms. I believe due to, you know, factors outside of our control, it seems like we've lost our German program at MCPS because that position has gone unfilled. I don't, maybe by some stroke of good luck, a German teacher will, will move to Montgomery County or nearby and, and want, want to teach here, but perhaps the addition of another French teacher would, would make sense. I know the, one French teacher teaches at BMS, BHS, and in Auburn. That's a lot of travel for, for one person, a lot of preps. And I want to make sure that our student-teacher ratios are, are staying on the lower side because that also speaks to student success. It seemed like we were creeping up on some of those, especially at the elementary level.
Great. Dr. Roundtree.
So we'll go, have a few on here. Everything that was brought up, I agree with. The AP coverage was something that I really wanted to hit on too. I did a little bit of research on it. We have 444 students, or 444 AP credits enrolled right now, which at $100 a pop for the test is $40,000 approximately, which in our budget is a considerably small amount. So I would, I'd like to just, as some other, some of our surrounding counties do, cover the cost of AP core, AP testing. And then we have successfully implemented a breakfast-at-no-cost-to-students program this past year, and I would like to extend that to lunch-at-no-cost-to-students as requested by our principals in our last meeting. If the, potentially we'll have breakfast covered by state legislatures with the bill coming back up from Domenica, or legislator Domenica, this coming year. And, let's see, again, review and correct discrepancies in non-certified staff with competitive compensation to their peers outside of MCPS. Adjust parasub salaries to be reflective of teacher sub salaries, both the, the amount and for the, for the comparable level of certification that they, they receive the comparable pay. And then, as we saw from our, from our students, mental health is very much on their mind, so increasing our, our mental health services in our schools as well. I have a few more, but I'll let Penny go. I, I didn't want to take ones I was pretty sure you were doing. All right. Increasing our minimum wage to a livable minimum wage for a single person here in our county, which I believe is at $20.14 for Montgomery County. And to restate what Ms. Bond and Ms. Purcell stated, fixing up our playground equipment. Some of our playground equipment is in rough shape. Things are, things get shut down that kids can't play on, and they, our elementary students, and I even think our middle school students really need a little bit of outside time throughout the day in order to, to blow off some steam. So that's everything for me right now.
Ms. Franklin.
Okay. So I also agree in increasing our support staff. So I also agree in increasing our support staff wages and look at benefits. I hope to never see mentioned another stipend for our employees, that their wages are where they should be. I would like to see RNs in each of our schools. It took us, took quite an effort to get nurses in each of the schools, but RNs would better serve our students. Montgomery Central, so we had a presentation last board meeting about the restructuring there for the Phoenix program, how things had gotten, let's just say, different for our students and they weren't getting educational support that they should have. I don't want that to be, quite frankly, a part of our budget for next year, other than to roll over because that needs to come back and be a part of the agenda first part of the year so that process can start and then it go into the budget. Because it's not fair that these students are not, don't have the same equitable things that the rest of our students have, just because they're in our alternative program. We talk about playground equipment, they have a basketball court. It's not really a basketball court. They have some basketball things, hoops and stuff. That's not enough for these students. They need more. They have cold lunches every day. That needs to be corrected. And it needs to be corrected now, and then again rolled into the budget, so it's there sustainable. Let's see. I mentioned this also, that there needs to be an increase in staffing in our Department of Equity and Diversity. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is a mental health issue. When we talk about mental health, for some reason, we forget that equitable treatment and access is a part of a mental, is a mental health issue too. So at one point, we had a tiered individual specialist, intervention specialist in each one of our schools. And now we're down to about three or four. I've raised this point for the last several years, and it just seems to get brushed away. There needs to be more support in our schools for our students and for our staff. So that needs to be looked at. It is a mental health issue. I've spent a lot of time listening and working with some of our nutrition folks. And as you heard from Ms. Knott's equipment, there have been times when unbeknownst to the board, there were ovens that didn't work. Kids were getting cold lunches because ovens didn't work. And no one bothered to say that until people spoke up to board members and other equipment, dishwashers. Can you imagine a school without a dishwasher? Right, well, we had one. And again, we heard that there was equipment that was decades old that needs to be replaced. This is one of those things we do for our staff to show that we appreciate them, is give them the equipment to work with. And this goes with our grounds people, our custodians. All of our employees need the equipment and the supplies to do their jobs. So we need to look at those things. Let's see. And when I mentioned our payers being paid, it also was including, I've really meant the subs because when you only have, you have less than 50% coverage of your paraprofessionals, that's extra demands on the classroom teachers and everybody else in the building. That's got to be addressed. Let's see. And our specets staffing, I also agree. We need to make sure our students are being served, all of our students, equitably. And the playground equipment, absolutely. Oh, and the assistant principals not being shared between the elementary schools. I understand there may be smaller numbers at some schools, but does that mean they don't need the same kind of support that all students get?
Great, thank you. So I'll have my thoughts in here as well, even though I'm going out the door here. So y'all are going to have to deal with this next year. But I mean, it's definitely hard to argue with most of what we heard here tonight. You know, I appreciate a Dr. Graham's kind of assessment, the starting point. I mean, all of that makes sense. You know, for me, I mean, I think, I think it's nice to kind of start new programs and kind of do new things, but I think first we got to take care of what we got, right? And I've heard a lot of comments tonight, you know, I agree with everything that Ms. Franklin said, right? Like we've got, we've got existing issues we've got to take care of, right? You know, in terms of the salary scale stuff, and we heard that from a lot of our folks who presented at our last meeting, I think that, you know, this is an oversimplification, but I feel like oftentimes, you know, in past budgets, we add the new teachers we need to add in order to fill the needs we have. We figure out what kind of flat increase we're going to give to everybody, and we kind of call it a day, right? You know, and then mid-year, we're adjusting these salaries because we didn't do the work we needed to do in the budget process, right? So, you know, I hear Dr. Gitry on his comments about some of those staff that are being underpaid in comparison to their equivalents in the county. But that's our fault, right? I mean, that's our budget that is driving that, right? We're not putting the emphasis on those people, in my opinion, right? So I mean, I'd like to see, I like to see the work being put into the budget process now to find those gaps and bring everybody to the level that they need to be, right? I think we got a great start with the presentation that Dr. Brewster worked on and we approved tonight. You know, let's do more of that, right? We had other people come out and send us emails after that initial conversation. Let's look at all those places and make sure that we're doing what we need to do there. And then, yeah, when it comes to kitchen equipment and playground equipment, right? Like all the things that our staff and students are using on a daily basis, let's get all that stuff right. So that's my, that's my two cents on that. And then mostly echoes what we heard tonight.
I have one more. So Dr. Gitry's comment about a five-year plan. In five years, things will just keep moving. I think it should be a two-year or a three-year plan to bring folks in line with the county. And if they don't give us the money so that we can do that, then it won't happen.
I do want to say something before me or Laura go. So for the free breakfast program, that's an amazing opportunity for the students. I love that. But for the lunch, students are still having to pay. And something that my human geography teacher said to me really stuck with me that you should not have to be paying for lunch if you legally have to attend school. And I have like, you know, this short story. I'm a very picky eater, and my grandma packs me lunch every day for school. But I do not eat, like I get free reduced lunch, but I don't eat at the school. But I always still get my meal, and we'll give it to like one of my friends so they have extra food to eat. Well, one of my friends, he forgot his lunch, but he still has to pay for school food. And he was, you know, he didn't want to go in a lunch line, you know, to get food because he didn't want debt on his lunch account for his parents to pay. So he wanted to go, you know, through school without breakfast or lunch just before the program, the free breakfast program was implemented. So, you know, I gave him my lunch, my free lunch at school, and I also gave him some of my food from, you know, my lunchbox. But I just wonder how many kids are having to go through the same thing, you know? Who might not have a friend who has, you know, free lunch or able to give something, you know? And also for the AP exams. Specifically, Blacksburg is a very competitive school. Everyone in my grade, I'm a junior, everyone in my grade is, you know, taking a bunch of AP classes, you know, trying, always bragging like about their grades and what classes they're taking. And as someone who's low income and trying to keep up specifically in like, you know, the advanced classes, it's hard because they don't have the same resources. Like for my psychology class, we had to make a project. And I didn't have arts and crafts or extra, you know, food to make that project. So I had to speak with my principal, Mr. Stewart, and Ms. Powers, my assistant principal, so I can get money to go to Walmart and, you know, get resources. And I just think we're all here for the students. That's why we're here, so. Not like, there's so many things impacting students' lives, you know? Having to deal with stress and school and money and having to pay, you know? There's a lot of money you have to spend on life. But that eventually will affect mental health because sometimes people will think, oh, I need to be doing more. I need to be taking all these classes, but I also should have, you know, a job because, you know, people expect you to work harder. So I just, I just think there really needs to be a focus on like mental health resources. I've been, I've been very lucky, you know, to have extra support. Specifically for me, like I have a 504 coordinator, I have interVCS, inpatient and outpatient counselors. But many students don't have that. And a lot of students can't even afford that. I'm able to afford it because I'm low income. And so I just, you know, get extra resources. But what if, you know? What if you, your parents make too much money to exceed the budget line? You know, like, oh, you're not eligible for free lunch because you make too much money, but they're still technically in poverty. It just, it doesn't make sense to me. And no, no one should have to go, you know, to school without a meal. And at Blacksburg High School, we've had this... So due to the government shutdown, we had like this sweet gentleman, and he would bring in packs and packs of food for students to go to the nurse's office, and it has snacks and drinks and milk and like extra, like ramen noodle cups if you're still hungry. But they don't have that at all at the schools. And also many students do not know about, you know, this in-school pantry. So I just think like, for budgeting, we need to think about what's going to keep, what's going to reduce the stress on students so they can succeed. Because I don't want to be worrying about, like, I'm, like, I don't want to be worrying about like, oh, what if I can't eat? You know, I, like, my grandmother wasn't getting, you know, the food stamps because of the government shutdown. So I had to depend on the pantry for a little bit. And like, no one, no one should have to be worrying about their meal. And I shouldn't have to be leaving class, you know, to go find something to eat in the pantry while, you know, trying to take like seven AP classes. Like, do you see my point? I'm kind of scrambled everywhere. But you see my point, like, my emphasis on students getting the resources they need for food and everything?
Yeah, great. Thanks, Olivia. Laura, any thoughts?
I'd just like to piggyback off of Olivia real quick and then also add something to my own. On the subject of like budgeting for APs, I'm in five APs. My mom had to pay $500 for me to take the test just to get those credits. I'm a competitive student, and there are competitive colleges out there that won't look at your application twice if you don't have a single AP on there. And it's not fair to students who can't give hundreds of dollars to college board who won't be able to get into those competitive colleges that have those like, you know, really good educations, just because like their family can't afford it. That's $500 that could have gone to groceries or my college tuition or anything else. And it's going towards a couple of credits that I think I should deserve if I have already put in the effort for that class. On the subject of school lunches, I think making that like, not paying for school lunches, I think that's really beneficial. I have a couple of friends who are on like the free breakfast program. And I've been told that apparently only milk is like a free, like not for these students specifically, but in general, milk is like the only free drink. I just, people deserve to eat, people deserve to have the nutrition that their body needs. I think amenities should be provided for those people. On the subject of immersion, which I know Dr. Gitry mentioned, there are a couple of Latina students at Auburn who don't speak English. And during just a class I was sitting in on for a club, I was informed that there, like, in English, there are no books for those students. Like there is a assignment where you like needed to get a book out of the library, and there were no Spanish books for those students. Montgomery County is a diverse area, especially with people coming like for Virginia Tech. And there should be books and amenities for these like students who don't have English as a first language. I gave a book I owned that was in Spanish for these girls because there was literally nothing else for them. And I think that's unjust and unfair. And I think something in the budget should be put towards that. I don't know exactly what that would look like, but just food for thought, I think that's important. That's all.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, ladies. You know, your input is just invaluable. I really appreciate you.
We talk about having student-focused budgets, right? It's good to hear from the students. That's why you're up here. Okay, we've heard a lot of great, great comments tonight. Any go-backs, any other comments that folks would like to make? Feel free to take off if you want. It's after nine.
I guess two more comments I have to make. This isn't, I don't know if this fits into like the budget discussion, which is why I've been wanting to say. So I've had a couple of peers who have IEPs and are not allowed, not allowed to, you know, register for like an English honors class or an AP honors class because they don't have like the, what's it called? Like the person, you know, helps read to you aloud.
What?
An aide, yeah, like an aide to read to them, like, you know, that fits like their IEP standards. And so they're just not allowed to do honor, like English honor classes or like AP literature. It's just, their disability should not be holding them back from, you know, taking harder classes to put them into, you know, harder college or stop them from, you know, challenging themselves. And another thing is, a lot of sports have to do like, you know, fundraising and everything. My boyfriend's on the lacrosse team, and you know, I volunteered at the concessions, you know, football games to help his team raise money. I'm on the girls varsity tennis team, and each girl has to raise a minimum of $200. I cannot raise $200. Most of the girls in my team, their parents were just able, you know, to write like a simple check and give it to the coach. I was not able to do that, so you know. I had to ask a lot of my friends' parents. One of my teachers, Ms. St. Germaine, she's very supportive of me and, you know, helps me a lot with everything. And she's donated to me to be able to do things such as go to States for DECA or attend like, cheer on my teammates at a state match, tennis match. But I was not able to raise the $200. I only raised like around $110. And what our, what our coach did is, you know, put us all in a group and basically did not name drop, but said like the girls who did not raise the $200 needed to do extra community service to make it up, which I don't think is fair. And that just adds more stress onto me and other teammates who do not have the money. I don't know what other sports are like. But just because we, like Blacksburg is a more competitive area or Montgomery County in general versus, you know, Pulaski County, we should, we shouldn't have to be, you know, putting in our own money just to be on a team or just to be considered, you know, a player. And what's hard about tennis is there's a ladder, and basically all the girls are ranked. I was ranked... I was ranked third to last. I don't know, sorry, I don't know if it was just because of my playing style. Or if I couldn't raise the two hundred dollars. But I did volunteer. I volunteered multiple times. I gave a lot of hours. Into my tennis coach. Thank you. But I just wonder, will this affect me for making the team this year? Because sophomore year I wasn't able to raise the two hundred dollars. I mean, it's just so unfair, you know? And I'm not sure how this could fit into the budget, but there's students, you know, who need help. Um, I, I don't know what other schools have. Blacksburg has, you know, the Brood Family Fund to help out, you know, students and. Um, help seniors pay for their college application fees, but I just. I'm not really sure what to do about this and it makes me anxious to, you know. Try out for tennis, you know, just because I don't have the money. I don't have the money, you know, to pay for the uniform. When I made the team, I already had to pay eighty dollars. Besides, from the two hundred dollars just for my uniform and the team hoodie that all the girls were required to have. And, you know, I was lucky enough that I had someone in my family, you know, to help pay for my tennis equipment. But, you know, not all students have that. Ha- having to pay for, you know. Equipment for their sports, like if they need new pants or, you know, a baseball bat or a lacrosse stick. And it just really worries me, um. What students are having to deal with this, but don't have the support they need. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for sharing tonight.
So I know several years ago. We had to overturn a um vote that was basically making athletics. Pay to play. And I know there's always been some little fees or things like that that go along with some sports. But what I'm hearing tonight. Should not be happening.
And I hate that that's happened to you, I truly do. But I have to say in my experience, most of the students that I've been with my children, there's always been help. For those students that didn't have it, there was a way, they could reach out and find, so even if you have to speak to someone. If you're this concerned or upset about, I, I'm, I'm sure there, there's so many people out there ready and willing to help students that don't have the funding. Um, you know, and, and as far as free lunches, my concerns. I did speak with someone in Richmond that does have free lunches and free breakfasts and they told me that the amount of waste is just unbelievable. And that's my concern with that, okay? So it's not the fact that I don't want students to eat, it's not the fact that I don't think students need free. And even with the A P courses, I do understand those are important to students and we need those. But I don't know that there's that many colleges that don't look at you because you're not taking A P courses. Now, I, I think there's a lot of students that are extremely smart and have high G P As and yes, that is something that is truly looked at. Um, and I'm not saying we shouldn't help, but I do think there's choices that we all have to make. And I wish we could do everything for every student. But we can't and, you know, although I appreciate everything you girls have been through and what you're going through. Just understand that sometimes as a board, as parents, as grandparents, as family members. We just, you just have to kinda make those tough decisions and um, you know, that's the great work that we, we do try to do, so. But you make sure you reach out, because like I said, in my experience. Having kids and grandkids playing sports, there's always been a fund there.
Because I know Montgomery County has um a passion around making sure that children can play sports and. Do what they need to do, so if something like that's happening, please, go to your principal, go to your guidance counselor, let them know. Because I'm pretty sure somebody at the school is gonna step up and make sure that you can play. We do not want you being able to. Uh enjoy sports because of funds, so. If you have to contact me or whoever the next superintendent is, but I think if you talk to your guidance counselor, that'll be taken care of at the school level.
So, I don't think we should necessarily keep pushing this back on the student. If there are things that we don't have in place, so these things are automatically happening, or that there are un.
Yeah, we need to know about it.
Put on students to have particular clothing, a particular this, just because we like it. It's not the students' fault, that's our fault. So, we need to be looking into what's going on. With all our sports to make sure there's no unnecessarily burdens, unnecessary burdens being put on our students. And not all students are even willing to even s- speak about it, they just don't participate. And then that's a disservice, disservice to our students. And, and that's just wrong.
Much like the proverbial, proverbial minister. Who was in a storm and the water kept rising. And a boat came. And he held off because somebody was gonna save him. And he kept holding off and eventually drowned. I hear you talking to us, you're telling us that students need help. I'm not forsaking that. I'm gonna fight for you all.
What, any other comments?
So, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm so sorry again that, that, that situat- that should have never have happened and thank you for bringing it to our attention. So the superintendent and whoever else needs to know to address that, but since. My daughter was in school and that was just, she's only been out for about two years now and she did play multiple sports. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think every sports team fundraises and tries to sell, we've got football. Cards, my daughter had to get donations for softball, so I do, I do think there is fundraising now. For what you need to have to play a sport, that should not be required that you. That you have that money to have what you need to participate. I totally agree with that, but I, I do think to the best of my knowledge, I'm not sure what some of those other funds are used for as far as that particular sport. But I do know, I think just about every sport fundraises money for. I do know for softball in particular, that money was used towards items for them to purchase for the team, but that was the. Coaches would use for the team and everybody would get, it doesn't matter how much money you raised. Those, those funds would be used to do everything for the whole entire team, so it was done. You, you know, just because you didn't raise as much as somebody else did, you should not be faulted for that, so, so I am sorry if that, if that happened to you, but. I'm sure we'll have that checked into and I agree with Ms. Bond, um. Whenever we've had issues with uh with certain kids in sports not being able to afford something. Um, we have always uh had people either step up or away for kids to get help and I don't want. Anybody to not participate in anything because of money, because that should not be an issue and I do know, I think. Didn't we overturn the fact that I thought we had the school purchasing the uniforms now? Because I thought we had changed that under Doctor Meyer and we had, I know you and I had brought that up several times and. Because sh- her cheerleading uniforms. So, I thought we had gotten to the point to where the kids were not responsible for paying for their, for their equipment and their uniforms now.
I don't think that went forward because I agree with you and that's what I was gonna say is some of the problem, the expense. Of what uniforms cost are just unreasonable, in my opinion, I mean, just, you know, now. With football, it didn't, it, I mean, it was, I mean, just, I know when, when my son played to buy the helmets were fifteen thousand. You know, I mean, but I don't think we ever got to the point to where I think it came up as a conversation piece.
And maybe we need to check on that. Need to do, but no child should be denied not to play a sport because they cannot afford.
You are correctly right, I think it's one of those things where, it goes beyond uniforms though. It's like, okay, you've gotta have the sweatpants, you've gotta have the hoodie and you've gotta have the this and you've gotta have the workout pants and. And that's where I think the cost goes into, that. In my opinion, becomes a burden.
We'll, we'll check with our A Ds.
And we can move forward from there.
So not to, not to change the subject, but a couple. So it seems like there's broad consensus on salary scales and paraprofessionals, which I agree with. On those issues, but I did wanna ask about two particular issues that have come up. That the, the one is about the immersion program, the dual language. I'm supportive, that's one thing that, um, I'm not sure if there's a consensus for the board, cause that's, I remember that being about a quarter million dollars. Initial investment in that, so I'm curious to hear from the board, the fellow board members about that issue. And the second one is to have some fund for, to help students with the A B. Exams, whether there's a consensus, will the board on that? Cause I think in terms of facilities and a lot of the other issues, there's broad consensus, but in those particular, I, I didn't hear if there was or not.
Let's go around real quick and, and provide your feedback on those two, the, the dual language and the, some kind of support for A P exams. Ms. Franklin, you said you're good with both? Doctor Roundtree?
Yes, I'm uh good with A P uh testing coverage. Uh dual language, I would, I want dual language and I would like to see some presentation on. The cost of dual language and the offsets of the cost, so it's not just a. It costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that first year. It's more, or if I recall correctly, it's more like half of that, because one of those teachers was already a teacher anyway. We just needed to pull one more teacher in, in order to provide two classes, uh so I wanna make sure that the, all the math is mathing correctly. And then what the, what the additional cost is for that first year, the following year. Is it still gonna be that same two hundred and fifty K plus first grade is two hundred and fifty K? And then try to understand what it is for one school and then also for equity reasons. See what it is to at least branch it out to a school. In the area of the four communities, it, it could be uh. Eastmont Elementary or Falling Branch, those are kinda in, so that people can come to that, that school. Um, and then same thing over in the, the Auburn area and Christiansburg area. Preferably, I mean, I, I would like to have this at all eleven of our elementary schools, but I. I think that that may be uh. Prohibitive on many reasons. The, the also, along with that proposed, or well, along with that feedback from the administration and the staff. Um, how that actually gets done, is it, is it a Spanish class across? All the areas or is it a different course um across different areas? Where we do have some native Hispanic or uh Spanish speakers. However, we also have native um Mandarin speakers and, and other speakers in the area. So what that looks like.
Ms. Pissel?
Uh, I'm in support of funding A Ps for students if, if that works, I would absolutely love to. Start a language immersion program at that elementary level, I just want to make sure that it can be sustainable because to get it fully funded. Up through fifth grade, that's like a million and a half dollar program, uh and retaining teachers and I, um. Would be a concern, attracting teachers and then I. Believe if I'm remembering correctly, um, there was a program to, to bring international teachers. In and I just have concerns about visas for reasons that are outside of our control. But I'd love to do it, so, I mean, put it on the wishlist and we'll see what shakes out.
I can't support either one of them, just because um. We've got people in the district making fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour, we put a million and a half in, in a dual language program, which I think is wonderful. And would love to do, how can we say we're here for the staff and the students who aren't gonna do that? I, I don't understand, if it's all about the students and that's what we're geared, geared to do. Then it, then we need to be doing the things that affect all students, all of them. And these two line items, in my opinion, are great if you have the extra. But we've got so many things that need to be fixed, that need to be brought to where they need to be. That and, and if we're truly gonna make a difference, then this is how we need to do it.
So not to be repetitive, I agree with everything Doctor Roundtree said. Uh, my concern with that main thing being number one, the cost, number two, the equitability of it in all schools. And the third thing being, is this something that we're going to be able to maintain? In the future in our budget and I don't wanna start a program that could possibly have to get pulled. I have a lot of concern over that, cause I see more harm than good, uh if we have to do something of that nature, so. I would really have to weigh that in with exactly what Ms. Bond said about what our current needs are and what our. Students are telling us that their needs are and what I know my district especially needs. Their needs are that aren't getting met, so um probably would not be interested in looking at that in. This budget particularly, but not to say that I'm not in favor of it, I think it would be a great thing if we could have the money to do it. Uh, as far as the A P goes, I'd have to say I think there's an equity issue there as well, because here again, we're spending money on students that we're not spending on every student. And as much as I want to help people who need help with the A P exam and I get it, I had to pay for them for my daughter. Um, so is there any way we could look into maybe fancying the idea of either paying a portion of that? Or the ones who do need the help, paying for those? Seeing if we could start some type of program or a grant, we can look outside for grants or even. Community, a community funding or asking a community business or, or different ways to raise money to, and have that go for helping. Those students with that particular item, so that's just a thought.
Doctor Gitry, did you wanna add any more comments on this?
Yeah, I, I, just to clarify, um for the, the support for A P, I, I wasn't proposing. That off the bat that we cover all A P exams because the, the cost is really significant if you actually pay for all of them. Given the number that, that are taken each year and we're talking well over a thousand. So that's, but I do think that there is a way to, to support our students equitably. Because just to, I mean, just think about the investment, if they, it, yes, it's a hundred dollars per exam, but. If they get that credit, that could save five thousand dollars in a course. At a community college or at a four-year university. So for students, this is a significant investment in their future and their ability to attend higher, uh, a higher education institution. It's not just a bonus, not something that's just added. For many of our students, they sees this as essential, especially for students who don't have the economic means to afford a four-year college. So I, I, I just wanna push back a little on this, the, 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 the sense in which they're just doing this because they're super competitive and. And, and they wanna, you know, um, this is just bonus, cause it's not just bonus.
Okay, great, and I guess, again, my two cents, um. You know, I'll go back to what I said earlier, you know, I, I, I would still prioritize, you know. Cleaning up some of the stuff we already have before starting new programs, I, I've always loved the dual language program. And I'm not, not in favor of it, it just wouldn't be high on my priority list, right, uh until we. We adjust salary scales and we fix some of these other issues that we've, we've articulated tonight. On the A P piece, I mean, I, I agree with Doctor Gitry, right, I mean, I think that i- i- in a lot of ways for me, that. Kinda bleeds over into some of the conversations about providing free lunch and free breakfast, there's. Plenty of people in need in this county who could use that support. of people in need in this county who could use that support, and we should find ways to make that support available to them. A lot of people in this county that don't need that support, and they shouldn't have taxpayer money helping them pay for things that they are perfectly capable of paying for themselves, right? So, that's the balance I think you need to strike if you're going to do any kind of program like that. But students shouldn't be having to decide between, am I going to pay my A.P. exam, or my lunch, right? Or all these other, other costs that, that our students have to entail. I mean, our students, my kids were in band, right? I mean, it was, what, $400, $500, ever increasing every year for that, right? And the track is $500. I mean, it's all over the place, right? It just adds up, adds up. We should be looking for ways to help students who have those needs, not necessarily trying, trying to cover all of it, because that, I'm not sure that's realistic. That's my sense, that's my two cents. I look forward to seeing you guys debate this in January and figure out the plans. It's going to be great. We've covered a lot of ground tonight on the budget. I want to make sure that every, everybody's been heard, and any other, any other comments?
Just say thank you to the board. That's very helpful. And also wanted to point out, because you mentioned so many facilities things, Dr. Brown is working on prioritizing, and we're doing the facility review of the schools. So, we do realize there are a lot of facility needs. He has color-coded and is working diligently to try to prioritize what's, what's an immediate need, what can wait. And we'd love to do it all, but that'd be $10 million right off the bat.
Great.
What does our one cent capital set aside look like right now?
Where is Ms. Bland?
Trying to hide back there. Well, we can't have a budget conversation and not have Ms. Bland up here.
That's right.
Yeah, she's so close. Thank you both.
And your question, I'm sorry, was it the timing of it, or?
Uh, no, what, how much of, how much is in the capital set aside currently?
Sue, we have expended the majority of this year's capital funding. The majority of that was encumbered early in the year for the two roofs that were done, as well as the majority of the projects. A lot of the capital projects, the larger ones, have to be done in the summer. We need the students out of the building to do those. So, the majority of that funding is funded early on in July and August, and then the remaining items. We've had a few things trickle through, but the majority of that funding has been spent. One of the things we're looking very closely at right now, too, we've had some discussions with the county about the interest for Christiansburg High School. So, there's some opportunities as well, along with in July, you know, our capital funds. There's, there's an opportunity to do a lot of, you know, capital items on that. So, we're working very closely with Dr. Brown and, and looking at what some of the immediate needs are for that. But we're looking forward to the, to that one cent again soon.
Thank you.
Board, any other comments? It was a healthy conversation.
Well, just one quick comment. When, when I make the comment about, you know, making sure that we're looking at all our facilities and things like that, I'm even talking about sometimes the inexpensive things. You know, like I said, just whether it's bringing in dirt, whether it's, and there's little things that a lot of the schools have asked about the facilities that are really, it's something that doesn't cost that much money. It's getting it done, prioritizing, and those are the things. I think I'm, I'm heading more in that direction than I am spending millions and millions and millions of dollars. So, I just want to make sure that that's, you know, heard. It's, it's not always expensive things that make a difference. And so, when I say that, I'm talking about getting the lightbulbs changed, you know, getting the lights up in the auditoriums in the schools that we have that need to be done, getting the, just the things that we have, we just can't seem to get happening. And, and so that's kind of what the direction was that I was going with that, not always expensive, so.
You know, I feel like at Blacksburg High School, for instance, I haven't made this walk in a while, but, you know, it used to be when you walked from the, the football stadium up towards the high school, like, most of those lights are out in, in the parking lot, right? And there's some electrical issue that just needs to be figured out, right? That kind of stuff.
You know, I'm just going to bring up again, not to drag this conversation out, so my apologies, but, you know, we had one of my district members, Mr. Sisson approach. We're talking about moving a sign so people will know when sporting events are happening, you know, little things. And then I got brought to my attention the other day that the only basketball court at Eastern Montgomery High School, which I think is literally one, is cracked and needs to be totally redone. And I will say, in, in the big scheme of things, it's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money to, to fix something like that for those kids, because, you know, they don't have the opportunity to go to the, to a rec center, or to, to have that. And if, and they could come up the mountain and go to the rec center, but here again, we're looking at issues that they have, such as transportation, and, and a means and a ways to do it. So, I'm just going to touch on what Ms. Bond said about the little things. You know, sometimes I know we might look at those as being kind of insignificant and not a big priority, but I think, but to them, it is a big priority and a big significance to them because of what's going on there. So... Yeah, I mean, just stuff like that. I, I think we, we should kind of go back to looking at some things like that as well.
Great, Board, anything else? Awesome. I think it was great to have this conversation of this early in the process, to really give the administration a lot of good feedback as they go into their budget process. All right. In the home stretch, are there any items of unfinished business?
Yes, I think this is the, maybe the right time to do this. So, we talked about it last time. We had a motion that didn't go, but I'd like to move to get the drafting documents moved forward for the Phoenix program in order to maybe have a vote on the whole Phoenix program in December, or, sorry, in January.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Did I make that as a motion? I think I did.
No, it just, well, it should just be asking for it to come back on the agenda.
Oh, no, I'm moving to vote for, to get the drafting documents done now, so that we can get it back on the agenda.
Okay, I got you, the drafting documents, yeah.
Want to second the motion?
Yeah. So, in January, to get that, okay.
We'll get the drafting done now, and to bring it back up on January.
Okay, so I think we have a, have a motion and a second on that. We had that, I think that was one of the items we thought to have on the agenda for tonight, and just for time, just to bring that back and have, have more conversation with it. I think that, you know, the board had, I think the problem last time was the board hadn't really made a decision. They wanted to move forward on the program at all. So, whether or not to start the process earlier or not, right? But, I mean, however the board wants, wants to do it, absolutely.
I think some of the arguments was about the public not having time to, to comment on it, but now the public's had a public address. Had a lot of people talking about it.
Yeah, we did. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second, just to clarify, to move forward on the draft, on, on the drafting documents of the architecture staff. Right, right, right. Okay. Any other discussion on that, Board? Again, this isn't necessarily approval of moving forward with the program. It just helps us get a head start on it, I guess is the intention, right? Shovel ready?
So, I want to make a couple of comments about this program. So, this was a program that was in this district for years, and it went away. And our students are not being educated. They're being put out of school for 10 days, and they're not getting any education. That's wrong. And the cost of it was, what, a few hundred thousand dollars, if that? Well, I'm going to remind this board that there was almost a million dollars approved for fuel tanks, that I don't even know what their, what the pro, what the progress is happening with that, where they are at, what's happening with that. The information we were given for that didn't actually tell us how much savings there was going to be by adding those fuel tanks, because we never got any figures on it. But we went, the board went ahead and approved for that to happen. This is about our students and making sure they're getting what they need so that they can come back into the schools and continue to, to try to be successful. They make, these are kids, and we know they make dumb, stupid mistakes, and they need to go out for a while to think about it. But we shouldn't deprive them of their education while they're out. And that's why this program was developed in the very beginning. So, I don't understand, if we're talking about fixing things that need to be fixed, this is one of the things that needs to be fixed.
I agree completely. But to my recollection, the one that we had in the original program, only certain students were able to go to the Phoenix program. Not every student could. That's not, if I remember correctly. Do what? No, no. If there were students, if they happened to be expelled, if you're, are you talking about expelled students or long-term suspended?
Long-term suspended.
Okay.
Or short-term suspended, is what this is addressing.
Okay, okay. Right, okay. But do our students now, aren't they able to go to Montgomery Central? I thought they were.
No, no.
Okay, okay.
Dr. Graham?
That was, excuse me, sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. You go ahead.
That was one of the reasons I didn't want to hear the presentation at midnight, and even though I understand why, and I appreciate the fact that we got it, because I don't know that I truly heard everything he said at a quarter till midnight. So, that goes back to one of my issues with hearing a presentation of that importance that late. So, to that, I, I completely understand, and I, I think it's a great thing we do need to do, but it would have been nice to be able to understand it a little bit more.
So, just a quick clarification. It was for children that were suspended, up the 10-day suspension. And where you might run into two students not being able to do it, we think we can even address that, because like, if two students were in a fight, you aren't going to have them there at the same time. So, you may have to do some scheduling of, one comes three days, one comes four, or something like that. But the intent would be to offer it to any student that's been suspended for the 10 days.
Okay, that was, that was one thing. I think I was going to ask how that was going to work, if there was more than one student involved. But even if our student is suspended for long-term suspension, are they not required to be sent their schoolwork to them by their teacher? Are they not working on, on their schoolwork while they're suspended?
I'll ask Mr. Garrison to correct me if I'm wrong, but I, we do provide an opportunity for them to work at home, just whether or not they do that. There's less guidance in some homes than others.
Yes, some of our students getting repetitively in trouble on 10-day suspensions. They're not, they're not succeeding in their classwork. And as they get behind, they have more trouble in their classwork, and I, I think they get in more trouble because they're not engaged as much in the school activity, because they're not able to keep up, because they keep falling behind. I mean, when we, when we see kids for expulsions that have been out for 30 or 40 days on long-term suspensions before the expulsion hearing, it's pretty telling.
Dr. Gettrich?
You have a question? So, I agree there's, I, I don't, I can't say that I retained everything from that conversation. I'm, I'm confident I didn't. But I don't know if it was discussed at the presentation, but why was the program, the original program, ended? Was, do we know why? Was it?
I was not here when it was ended. Do you know?
So, so the explanation that was given, when I repeatedly asked that question, was that, quite frankly, the, the program was being, trying to be implemented incorrectly. So, they were students who were out of school, who were put out of school, say, at 9:00 in the morning. They said, "Well, we can't just bring students in, send them over there at 9:00 in the morning, and then have them there for half a day and try to get things done." It was being used incorrectly. It wasn't being used the way it was intended to be used. And what was presented to us is more in line with what was presented 20-some years ago, as to how the program was going to be used, to give this, give the building principal at Montgomery Central or at the Phoenix program, and the staff to be able to prepare for the student to get there for a day or so. Then the student came in and continued doing their work and whatever at the program.
Yeah, Mr. Stanley talked about that, too, that kids were put out of school and sent immediately.
Right.
So, there was no prep time. So, with the new plan, there would be prep time of two to three days before the student came over to make sure that work was sent over, teachers had time to look at it, they could prepare for the student that was coming.
That makes sense. I just, it's curious to me that if that was the problem originally, why not just reform it? Is that really the reason, is that the reason why it was closed down, because they weren't implementing it?
That's the reason I was given. That's, quite frankly, it was given to the board. That's the reason that was given, when I asked that question.
Dr. Widener, do you have any other information on that? No.
Yeah, I mean, that, that reasoning was given from the, the podium to the dais since we've been on the board.
Okay. Thank you.
So, does that mean if there's a student who goes on long-term suspension with this, what would they be like, I guess, technically homebound for those days while that transfer is happening? And then, after that, those accommodations are met, they would then go to Montgomery Central and fulfill the rest of their, the suspension period?
Basically.
Okay.
If they did a great job, there's even the chance that they can go back to school sooner, rather than the whole 10 days.
Oh, okay.
So, there's some motivation built into the plan as well.
Board, any other comments? So, just to, to circle back. So, we currently have a motion and a second to pursue the architectural diagrams in anticipation of, of an eventual vote about this, so it can be shovel-ready if the board chooses to move forward with it. So, we still have that motion and a second. Any other discussion? Ms. Reed, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gettrich?
Yes.
Ms. Pardon?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right. Any other items of unfinished business?
Yeah, there's something I was expecting to see on the agenda. Usually, when we, we have a presentation, we ask for more information. It rolls over to the, the next meeting. So, we had asked for some additional information on the GPA policy. Thank you for, for providing some additional data. You know, when I asked, I don't know how long it takes, or how much work is involved with polling data, but I appreciated it. So, you know, I was alerted to this, this concern by a community member back in June. And so, I've, you know, here we are six months later. And so, I would like to know what we're going to do on that issue. So, when we were, we were given additional data that showed that over the period, you know, one of the reasons for having the policy was to navigate students away from A.P., taking so many A.P. courses into fine arts and other courses. And the data that we got both from you, that we got showed that the, basically, there hasn't been an increase in the fine arts. I was looking at BHS in particular. Meanwhile, the number of A.P. courses has increased 50% over that period. So, if the purpose of the policy is to, to motivate students to take fewer A.P. courses and take more fine arts courses, then it's not working as a policy, because the data shows that it's not having that effect. And so, for me, you know, with this issue, I mean, I know that there was a committee recommendation, but I would ask a little bit more directly from... but I would ask a little bit more directly from my fellow board members and from the administration. If across the state, students who take AP courses and get an A, get an additional bonus, why would we not want to have that reflected in their GPA accurately? Because right now, it's not an accurate reflection of that one-point additional credit for an AP course. Now, I know that colleges look at ranges. I know that there's a lot of context. But for me, that's like the basic question. Why would we want to miscalculate students' GPAs if we know that it could hurt just even one student? Five students, 10s, I don't know, but that's kind of irrelevant. Like, why would we not? So I think that's my question to my fellow board members and to, to the superintendent. Why would we not want to accurately calculate GPAs in line with every other division in the state in the expectation?
So, so I'll speak to that first. My understanding was that we would bring that back to the board for further discussion due to the length of tonight's meeting. We postponed that till January. Why would we not calculate? Our guidance counselors, I think the committee listened closely to what they had to say about the mental health of students and looked at what they think has been working. And the committee recommended to stay with the way we had been doing it because they felt like that was, no matter which way you do it, there's an argument either way. Are you looking at mental health? Are you looking at helping students who might increase their GPA for a fraction? So overall, the committee felt like they wanted to go with what we had been doing. Board members may feel differently about that. And that's why we plan to bring it back in January for you to speak to what the board wants to do.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I was on the board when all that was taking place. But from what I thought was, it was not to, to motivate students to take less AP courses. I thought it was to avoid lowering the GPA for taking additional unweighted courses is what my understanding was of that. Am I correct in thinking that?
Dr. Comer, do you want to speak to that?
Ms. Pardon, I think what you're saying is that it wasn't necessarily to promote AP or not to promote AP.
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly what I'm saying.
It was if a student took a study hall versus an unweighted course, the student that took the unweighted course ended up with a lower GPA than the student that took the study hall.
Yes. That was my understanding, thus the mental health part of it as well that we just heard.
Yes.
And, and there were games being played with courses that were taken in middle school and being able to go back and drop those that would help your GPA once you got to high school. And all kinds of stressors that were being put on students and the parents involved with, how do we play this game so that we can get the best GPA we can get? And it, it just didn't make sense to keep doing that. For me, I want to give the students every advantage they can get. But if there's game playing that is allowed within our process so that people can go back and forth with classes and take study halls to do, to not get their, the extra points or get the extra points when students are working harder by taking the classes, that's a problem for me. So, yeah. So it need, whatever we're doing needs to be consistent so that the child is getting what they earned. And if someone has not earned that, they're not getting, they're not being put at an advantage over students who are working harder. Just because I can do this and it'll help me out by not doing anything.
I do want to jump in real quick on this because, you know, as, as Dr. Graham said, this, this is absolutely an agenda item that, that is still on the docket to come back. You know, we debated putting it on this one or not. We wanted to make sure that it had room to breathe. I reached out to, to, to several of you and, and there were questions, concerns. This wasn't like a, I don't care or I agree. Like, it was a lot of, it was, it was a lot of thoughts and, a lot of folks that sounded like we're kind of like me and I'm on the fence and wanted to hear more information. So we, we wanted to, to give this one a little more time to breathe. I think there was even a, a suggestion. This might be one of those things that you might want your next superintendent to weigh in on because you're changing the GPA model for the entire district, right? If you were to do that, you probably wouldn't make that change mid-year anyway, right? I, I don't know. I mean, that, like, that's a, like, that's a conversation point. At what point, if you were to change it, when would you change it? Students have already applied this year, right? So you're kind of outside of application processes. But, so, I mean, to Dr. Gettrich's initial point, like, like this topic hasn't gone away. It was just a matter of trying to schedule it. I mean, it's, it's hard. As your board chair, I look forward to popping some popcorn and sitting out there in a month or two and to see how the next leadership team navigates it. It's hard to be criticized for meetings going too late and then also being criticized for not having things on the next agendas, right? So it's, it's a tricky line to walk, right? And I look forward to seeing how the next person does it.
Yeah, and just to reiterate what Mr. Hudson said, we had, when we talked about it on a gen, at Agenda Prep, it was on the agenda. And he surveyed board members who said, we would like to give it some more time. So that's why it's not on this one.
So I, if there was-
Perhaps I didn't ask everybody.
Yeah, I didn't receive that email. And I'm just going by the tradition since I've been on the board that if we haven't, I, I'm not saying you don't care about it. I, I don't mean to imply that at all. I just, I expect it because that has been the, up until this point, that's generally been the rule. I'm not saying this has never been the exception. So I just didn't know, it was basically, I didn't know what was going on with this anymore.
Yeah, and I, I think I've expressed to the administration and other board members some of the things that I would like to hear about based on this. So there's actually three different GPA models that were presented to us. Since then, I've done some more digging and trying to understand what the, what the reasoning was back in, I think it was 2018, that went on. There's a, there's another factor to this that waiting, class waiting was removed from transcripts as a process of that as well to reduce the competition amongst students for that number-one spot in the, the class ranking. The, I understand reducing grades a little bit as you're talking, but in general, students are gonna be having more and more AP classes. So if a student has one AP class, their freshman year, one their sophomore year, one their junior year, one their senior year. If you went with the, the divide by eight, divide by 16, divide by 24, divide by 32 model, you would get the same result their senior year as if you did the divide by 32 model all the way through. There's also the traditional way of just, it's a five-point grade. You divide by the denominator of how many classes they took and that's the GPA. There's also mental health that I feel is talked about here, but there's no suggestion, hypotheses, reasoning as to why one of these models serves our students better or serves our students' mental health better than another one. So I, I would really like some comments on each model, why administration thinks that one is serving the other better. The class ranking thing and the competitiveness in our schools, I totally get. That definitely, probably, if we're removing that, if we've done that and we're not, we're not doing that anymore, that probably removes, oh, some, some mental health strain on our students. I do have some questions about that. I, I haven't had a child apply to college yet. When I applied to colleges, and my sibling did, there were, there were scholarships and out-of-state tuition waivers that were based on where you ranked in your, your class for a school. I don't know if that's still a thing or not. I haven't looked it up. If, if it is, then I don't understand how we couldn't be ranking students in order for that purpose for students going to, to colleges. But that, they may just not be a thing anymore.
Okay, yeah. It'll be on the agenda and we'll have plenty of time to, to breathe. Any other items of unfinished business? This has been exciting.
So I would like an update on those fuel tanks to see what's going on.
I've seen them out at Presses Fork Elementary. I don't know if they're being used or not.
I think Dr. Brown's on as well.
Oh, hot dog. Hold on. You don't have to provide an update tonight if you're not ready. But if you want to share a few thoughts, that's totally fine.
I can share what I know. We currently have the one at the Operations Center in Auburn ready to go. The other ones are waiting final approval from Montgomery County. They're in, they're, you know, they, they have, probably have some fuel in them right now. We're just waiting the final approval from Montgomery County to be able to start using two of the four. So we're made, we've, we've made plans to start using two of the four as, as a pilot program. I know Facilities is gonna start using the one at the Ops Center and things like that. We're gonna have PD in January to roll all that information out to all of our drivers and everybody in the division on how to use that. But I think the contractor's been having some issues getting some final approvals, but everything's installed, everything's in place. And I can, and I can bring you back some additional information in the January meeting as well.
Hopefully nothing. Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to throw a topic out there. I love Ms. Franklin's suggestion about trying to schedule another, to couple in the student matter, we have to do an actual, a public vote on the, on the collective bargaining MOU. I sent some texts out earlier. Like, if it's not too inconvenient, could we maybe get a consensus on that date while we're here on the dais tonight? So we can, we can give Tosh the guidance to get that together. Is, is that possible? So we're looking at either the fifth, the eighth, or the 10th. Because the student matter has to be resolved by the 10th for awareness. I don't know, Ms. Franklin, you said you could do all three? Yes, ma'am. Now, again, like, like initially as a student matter, we just needed a quorum. Now that meeting has become a little bit more than just a student matter, so. Yeah, but it's- Dr. Roundtree, how about you, bud?
Those are the only two items on the agenda?
Unless another student matter pops up.
Uh, the eighth or 10th.
Okay. Ms. Purcell?
I can't do the eighth because that's the Blacksburg High School Choir Concert, but I can do the 10th.
Okay, we got three 10ths. I know Wednesday's your favorite night. Sorry. It'll be short and we can schedule it whatever time you need.
I was gonna say. It's at seven, no, okay. Okay, I, I'll, I'll make that sacrifice.
Is there a time that works better where it wouldn't be so sacrificial?
We can do it after choir.
At eight?
Yeah.
It's okay. It's okay. We can do it after, after, so that would be, I mean, we could, six would be five, 5:45.
Six, five.
And if we hurry, then, yeah. I might get to church, right.
The 10th is who we're looking at so far. Ms. Pardon, you said you weren't available either way, right?
Eighth and the 10th, I already have an event, but I think I said if it was an absolute, you needed me to make a quorum to let me know.
Doesn't sound like we need you at this point, but you're always welcome. Dr. Gettrich?
Yeah, I haven't been able to coordinate, but I'm fine either way because I'm supportive of the MOU. But I just need to coordinate. But do whatever you need to do.
Okay, it sounds like the 10th works, maybe six-ish, is that, is that what I'm hearing? Get the student matter knocked out, take the vote? Okay.
Do what? I should be able to be there at 5:45. Here, sorry.
5:45, okay? Okay, okay, let's do that. Assuming that time works with the family, obviously. Mr. Garrison? Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Board. That, that makes that easier. Okay, any other items of unfinished business? Any items of new business? No? Any announcements?
I've got a couple, just about things, but I hope perhaps, I'd also like to say a few words in honor of Chair Hudson. Maybe that could be like the second round of announce, of announcements. I wanted to share that on November 18th, I was also able to get over to the Teen First Responder Academy graduation at the Montgomery County Fire and EMS Training Grounds that Dr. Graham mentioned in her superintendent's report. That seems like it's a long time, time ago now. And I just wanted to thank Ms. Atkinson for putting that really amazing program together, for giving students at Christiansburg High School that taste of what emergency services are and where maybe their place could be in that. She developed a partnership with our local first responders in order to do that. And a lot of this she did because of comments that we made here on the dais responding to requests from us. So I, I appreciate that as well. And if I recall correctly, Bradford University was so impressed by the program that they will be funding scholarships for EMT training for, for some of those students, which are close to $1,000 a pop. So it's a wonderful pipeline to ACE. It's a desperate need in our community and it's just a great experience for students. So thank you, Ms. Atkinson, for, for doing that. And congratulations to our, our first round of graduates. Thank you to the admin, to the division and to our taxpayers for sending us to the SBA, which happens the weekend before Thanksgiving. That's the Virginia School Boards Association Conference. I know that I always get new ideas and we get to talk to each other in a more informal manner. And Mr. Roberts, who will be taking over and for, to represent District A, was also able to attend. It was really nice to be able to, to get to know him as well. So thank you to the administration for, for supporting our attendance in that. And I also want to thank Dr. Graham for joining me at a meeting with Chief Claire at the Blacksburg Police Department. It's like the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. In short, the result of that meeting, I, I bring a request to my fellow board members that if they would feel comfortable maybe sending a letter or making a resolution, some kind of official statement to the town of Blacksburg to support speed cameras in school zones in Blacksburg. So that's, that's the short, the short story of the result of that meeting. But I can tell the long story too. And you can complain to me about, about making the meeting too long. And I'm, and I, I will fully accept that, that blame. So earlier this year, I asked Dr. Bragan at a meeting if he would, would potentially look into forming some kind of Traffic Safety Committee. Something like that existed in 2012, 2013. And the result of that committee was the school zone signs. and the result of that committee was the school zone signs that we have now in every school zone. Those, those didn't exist before, and the reduced speeds during arrival and dismissal. I think there were some grants from, from VDOT that might have come from, from that as well. But speeding in, in school zones and safety of kids crossing the street has just been an, an ongoing concern, and it's, it's a concern that is personal to me because when I look out my kitchen window, I see Gilbert Lincoln Elementary School. I live also on, on Tom's Creek Road, so it's, it's my, it's an issue for my community. So, I asked Ed, asked Dr. Bregan that at a meeting, and he responded to me privately after that, and he kind of kicked it back to me, and he said, "Could you please show some community support for, for this?" So, that was, so, you know, I got some homework. So, as I was having, having some conversations, I ended, and trying to do some research and get some information, I ended up talking to Matt Hanratty, who's an assistant town manager in the town of Blacksburg, and he said, "Well, why don't you put together a concern group about this particular stretch of road?" And that's like six, he didn't want more than six people because, you know, you get too many, and you kind of just hear the same thing over and over again. So, I worked with some of my neighbors, and the, those were the people who made up the concern, this concern group, people that live in McBride Village, off of Bros, along, along Tom's Creek Road. Some of them are parents of GLE students, some don't have children, some homeschool. It was just people who lived there. There were two concern group meetings, and I only was able to go to one of them. The second one was the day that we had the joint meeting with the board supervisors in June. The result of that was there are some crosswalk paint additionally on, on Tom's Creek Road from the, from the side streets, which are good. And then I had gotten a memo that said there would be, the engineer was going to do some, some research, and there, there would be some kind of follow-up in September. And then September, October, I saw a report that there were some rumble strips installed on Patrick Henry Drive, which is by the community center in the old location of the high school, to reduce speed, and I was like, "Well, what's going on with Tom's Creek Road?" I don't know, so I reached back out to Mr. Hanratty, and he told me something surprising. He said, you know, "Speed cameras are not off the table anymore." So, to add another bit of detail that I had left off, you know, the town of Blacksburg was, while they had approved the potential to install the, the speed cameras that we already have in the, in the county, the town did not like the vendor that the county is using, and their, their lawyer advised them not to, so that was something that they were not friendly to do. So, for, for Mr. Hanratty to say, "Hey, you know, cameras aren't necessarily off, off the table anymore. Why don't you reach out to Chief Claire?" So, I think I got that email like when we had a leadership liaison meeting here with the board supervisors, and I was talking to Chair Hudson about it, and I said, "I really don't want to go to that meeting by myself." And Dr. Graham walked by, and she offered to, to go with me. And so, when we met with Chief Claire, what he said was, you know, "They don't have the personnel to staff to do, you know, that kind of, the traffic enforcement that the town, that the town needs. They have found a different vendor that the town might be more comfortable with, and what he would very, very much like is support," well, he asked us at the meeting to support it, "but I'd love for our whole board to potentially support it as I think it's been a successful deterrent in the county as far as I understand. But if the board didn't feel comfortable doing that, I would just support it myself as an individual." So, there's, there's that story. So, thank you, Dr. Graham, and just something for, for board members to think about. And the last bit that I wanted to share is that, in addition to my work on the committee for the RU Governor's School, they've posted the position for the, the director, and Rob Graham, the superintendent. They wanted one school board member and one superintendent on that committee. Rob Graham from Pulaski County is the, the superintendent, and I'm the school board member representative on that search committee. So, those are my announcements that are not related to, to Mr. Hudson.
Great, any other announcements? That was a lot.
It'd be good with supporting a letter to the town of Blacksburg, for all schools, zones, to put cameras in, and the same for Christiansburg, too. Might as well get them both. They, it has been a deterrent. People know that there's cameras, the, the-
Yeah. Maybe we could put that in a future agenda item to discuss? Yeah.
They don't even have a school zone in Christiansburg.
What? No, there's a school.
So, can I make an, since we're at announcements, yeah, since we're at announcements, I just wanted to say, as we wrap up, thank you so much. I wasn't able to come to the reception this afternoon, but I, it's a thankless, very difficult job, and I know you have put a lot of hours and dedication into MCPS, and a lot has been asked of you from all of us, and I'm deeply appreciative of your commitment to MCPS and what you have done and the, the service you've provided to this county over the last four years, particularly the last two years, but thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, we're done, right?
We're going around in a particular order?
Yeah, I was going to go around. Did you want to go, or you want me to go?
Okay, so, I'm just going to take a second, too. You know, four years ago, when you first ran Lenwood, you ran against one of my dear friends, and, and won, and, you know, I didn't know you at the time, but I've gotten to know you, and you've done, you've been a great friend, you have done a fantastic job. I can't imagine, and I've told you multiple, multiple times, stepping up and doing the chair position in the time you did it, you were the man for the job, and I appreciate it. You've done a great job, and I appreciate everything you've done because we are a difficult group, and nobody likes to be told what to do, nobody wants to be reprimanded, nobody wants anything, and I appreciate it because I know the time that, the year I was the vice chair, it just took that little bit of extra few hours a week I had, and I can't imagine the time you've had to put into it. And it just is so much different now than what it used to be, and I appreciate you. I'm so glad we became friends, I'm so glad I got to meet you. And whatever endeavor you have for the rest of your, you know, career, and, and have fun and enjoy your life. And if we don't see you eating popcorn out there anymore, then so be it because I doubt we will. I've heard that from board members multiple times, unless they run from other things, they don't ever come back.
Thanks, Jamie.
So, Lenwood, I'm going to, I've said it a million times, but I'm going to say it again. Nobody understands what it feels like and what it means to, to sit on this board until you've sat in a seat, because to, to sit on that side and look this way is one thing, but to actually be sitting here and doing this job until you sit in the seat, you, you just don't realize. So, first off, thank you for your last four years of service. I want to thank you for extending an olive branch across, across the way to Jamie and myself especially. One of my most fun and memorable times will be when you first went to the conference in Williamsburg, and you didn't know us, we didn't know you, but, you know, somehow the three of us managed to hang out together and talk and get to know one another, and you, you have really been a great board member. I've served on this board and, and a board before with other board members. But honestly, Lenwood, you have been, I have been very respectful of you for many reasons, but I have to say, I think my top reason of respect for you is because not only do you take into account what your community and your people are telling you is important to them, but when it comes time to make a decision about things, you, you take into account everything, and you take into account everybody, and you know what? You take that information you know, and you make your own decision, and you do that on your own. So, I really admire you for that, and I respect for you for that, and thanks for doing this crazy chair job for the last two years because I know it's been a lot of work, and I'm just going to extend the thanks to my fellow board members because I'll be honest with you. When I first started on this board, it wasn't like it is now, and it's a lot of work out of each of us. So, not only do I want to thank you for your service and your time, but I want to thank everyone for all the time and hard work they've put in over the past year, and since you, you new ones have got on here and kind of gotten your feet wet, you, you know now that it's, it's a lot of work and a lot of hard decisions to make, and so, it's, it's very commendable for anyone. So, thank you again for, for everything and for your friendship, and I wish you absolutely nothing but the best.
Thank you, Dana, I appreciate that.
Any other announcements?
Yeah. Yeah, so, I, I was elected back in twenty, November 23, and I really appreciate the time in November and December of that year before being sworn in, getting to, to talk to you, your, your guidance about what some of the, the processes were of being on the board and some of the difficulties, how you, how you handle those. And I haven't known a, known a chair other than you since I've been on the board two years. I mean, I guess technically Bernie was chair for a couple of minutes before, at the first meetings, or is he just an organizational person? I don't remember. But I appreciate all of the, the times taking calls, being a sounding board for, for thoughts about what's going on on the board, and sorry for all the trouble that I caused from time to time, too.
It was all good trouble. Thanks, Derek.
I hope you find much more pleasant things to do on Tuesdays. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, then Monday.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Penny.
I don't know if I can get the words out.
Let me chime in while you take a minute.
Loosen the rescue.
Thank you, I couldn't have asked for a better chair with more wisdom. I measure people a lot of times by how I think they present as a role model for children because children watch this, and that's what it's all about. What a great role, role model. You lead with kindness, compassion, respect for everyone that presents. I really appreciate having worked for you and have learned a lot from watching you, and I don't think anybody knows how much time goes into the job you've done. So, very much appreciated.
Thank you, Lois.
I'm just not ready to say goodbye yet, so. But we are going to miss you.
I mean, we got four more meetings, you got the people, I mean, come on. You're going to be tired of me by, uh-
And the swearing-in ceremony and-
Yeah, yeah, right.
But this is, this is the last public meeting where you, where you are chair, and your leadership has made a huge difference in this community.
I appreciate that. All right, thanks, everybody. It's been a long night. Any other announcements, like for real this time? Okay. All right, oh my gosh, upcoming school board meetings, we got quite a few of them. A bunch of special sessions, and our next one that we just agreed to on the 10th, correct? So, we'll get all that, board docs, agenda preps to come, and that's it, people. I adjourn this meeting at 10:30 PM.